Welcome back. I believe we're going to nine point three point five. Scott?
Good afternoon, Reeve and Council. It's a pleasure to be here this afternoon. I have before you the Site Link 2024 Forum Event. The MD of Bonneville has been offered the opportunity to host the 2024 Site Link Forum. This is a four to seven day long event. Brings together industry-specific site selectors and location advisors, including those from the energy, protein and agriculture and techno- technology, renewable technologies in aviation and aerospace sectors to showcase potential development in our community and to educate economic development professionals and local elected officials as to the best practices for investment attraction. Excuse me. Hosting a site selector or location advisor typically occurs after years of building relationships and attending numerous industry-specific trade shows. There are approximately 300 site selectors in North America. To date, there is no record of a site selector visiting the MD of Bonneville. The physical and financial resources associated with the traditional approach to attracting site selectors over 10 years has the potential to exceed $150,000 when you include trade show registrations, travel and accommodation, and marketing. This special event allocates time for the host community to privately discuss current and future development opportunities with the professionals that influence CEOs, CFOs, and COOs, as well as physically tour potential development sites in our community with them. These one-on-one conversations and site tours help economic development professionals and elected officials understand what information and activities keep a community on the short list for investment attraction and and move them, excuse me, to the visit stage and beyond to the deal stage. This event has been held in Alberta a handful of times, most recently hosted by Woodlands County in 2022, Lake Lebiche County in 2023, and will be held in Fort McMurray in 2025. Both previous host communities have activated relationships with site selectors and their clients for proposed developments as a result of these events. Attached is information additional with regards to Site Link. And I do apologize because I've never done this process with an appendix before. I'd like some advice as to whether we would discuss that now or if I would continue through the rest of the document. Okay, I'll briefly go through the appendix then.
Okay.
What's attached are excerpts from LinkedIn. And to summarize them briefly, basically, two of the attendees from the most recent event in Lake Lebiche, just days after the event, had talked about the benefit of attending the event and what they learned about the community of Lake Lebiche specifically and further about Northern Alberta and identified opportunities as a result of attending the event and found it very beneficial. Any questions about the appendix if we've had a chance to read the information?
Yeah.
So, in reference to the strategic plan, I feel that it's very well-aligned to building a viable and diversified regional economy is goal number one from the strategic plan. And objective was to develop an economic development strategy inclusive of business and industry attraction, retention, and expansion, while maintaining a rural influence. The total cost of the event ranges between $90,000 and $130,000. The contract fee with Webster Global for the Site Link Conference is $65,000 US, and that's for the presenters and the venue. Local tours such as agriculture, heritage golf, and other recreational activities, as well as private tours with site selectors and elected officials, costs are estimated at approximately $30,000. The cost could be offset by $40,000 in sponsorship from other, from provincial and municipal agencies, as well as the private sector. And I have it on good authority, having talked to both the organizers from the Woodlands County and Lake Lebiche events, that it was relatively easy to garner the sponsorship from both the provincial government and close-in municipalities. I can't speak to the provincial government at this point in time based on the new regime, but I know in the past that they have sponsored this event. So I assume that that would be an opportunity for us as well. So administration recommends that council approves hosting the 2024 Site Link Forum Event in the Municipal District of Bonneville, organized by Webster Global, at a maximum budget of $130,000 to be funded from the 2024 operating budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just got a question. I was wondering if you heard any feedback from, what's the feedback from Woodlands County and Lake Lebiche after their visit?
Right, so in fact, in talking to the Economic Development Officer from Woodlands County, he could not release any specific details because they're obviously in some contractual situations. But as a result of the Site Link in Woodlands County, they're working on three possible deals that were a result of the tour that happened in 2022. And with Lake Lebiche, surprisingly enough, even though it's only three weeks ago, after the tour, they've had conversations or activated relationships with the site selectors' clients on two different opportunities. And again, because of the nature of the business, I can't disclose who those are.
Thank you, Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, it's interesting. It's very exciting. It's like we need something in this area, and this is an opportunity that we didn't know about before. Sorry, I will make the motion to fund it for the asked amount. And I look forward to, yeah, having these site selector guys come out and look at our area and see what's available here and take it back to their businesses they represent.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves hosting the 2024 Site Link Forum Event in the Municipal District of Bonneville, organized by Webster Global at a maximum budget of $130,000 to be funded from the 2024 operating budget. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fadav and Counselor Skarsen?
Yeah, definitely exciting. The one easy thing about the two municipalities you mentioned earlier is, you know, they encompass the town and the rural district as well. You know, we're slightly a little different on that. And I'm pretty sure our neighborhoods municipalities will definitely come to the table and help sponsor this event as well. So I'm looking forward to this. I'm excited about it.
Thank you. Counselor Skarsen?
So I guess, so who would actually be organizing the event itself?
So Webster Global is the group that would be organizing the event. So they have existing relationships with approximately 200 site selectors across North America. And so they have contacts in the different industry sectors that we have identified in our original, our regional plan.
So then, so you'd pay them $130,000 to take care of it all?
No, we would be paying them the $65,000 US, right? And they would look after bringing in the speakers and the venue. But then we have costs that we would incur if we were having social events, right? And we're having tours, just like we have field tours and other tours that you're going to be going on in the near future. It would be organized in that fashion by us as well. And the goal there is, because we're on the ground, when we have the opportunity to have the captive audience of the site selectors, we're going to choose what we show them. And that would be based on where we believe they would be best to invest, right?
So would you show them like things like the Energy Center and the C2 Center?
That's definitely a possibility. Where I would start, you know, when we look at tax revenue and job creation, we're obviously very interested in looking at those properties or our subdivisions that are already developed, so they would have places to land. So that would certainly be on the top of our list as well, right? To bring them into the MD, right? It's not like, if it's a regional event, certainly we'll be able to highlight all of those other places. But my first objective, I think based on my job description, would be to make sure that they see the MD assets first.
Yeah, and I'm just curious as to whether or not, you know, has the town and the city even been, are they aware of this or do they?
I felt it was important for us to discuss it first, to be able to offer them the opportunity without having it confirmed yet would be somewhat dangerous, right? I do know in general conversations that the Alberta Hub Group is interested because they've been involved in the most previous one. And I know that if any of the other individuals in the economic development profession have been listening to me and have been talking, they will know, I would assume that, say, Mark Labor from Town of Bonneville has a pretty good idea if he's maybe talked to Bob Vesbelko at the hub. I haven't made any official offerings to anyone yet until we knew what we were doing here.
So then you could maybe offer them packages?
Absolutely. You know, based on what I've seen in some of the other communities, there would be, you know, a typical platinum, bronze, gold, pardon me, silver and bronze, where they would have certain, you know, opportunities to have more access than other individuals that are present. So I think it's a definite possibility. Whether they'll react positively or not is yet to be seen.
Thank you. Any other comments or would someone? Good. All right, then I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. On to nine point three point six. Thank you, Scott.
Sorry, before I start, maybe you can answer. Did you say a date there, Scott, for that? I didn't catch that. Was that like middle of summer or when is that? Sorry, I should have asked.
So typically, that event is the last week of May or the first week of June?
One of the things that we found, and it's flexible, but it's typically like in that quarter, based on the rotation of the other events he has. If we were going to have partners like Portage College or Lakeland College, if they were to come to the table, we'd have to probably shift that by about a week because that would impact convocation if we were going to be using their facility. Say they came to the table as an in-kind sponsor and provided some meals and some meeting spaces, we would adjust accordingly. But typically, it is this quarter, for sure.
Thanks again. Good afternoon.
To add to that, the other combo potential is the FCM Conference is actually happening in Alberta next year. And if it is held in the month of May, there might be some opportunities there to potentially involve or get a larger audience to come out to an event such as this with people, Site Link locators from the States. Sponsorship is definitely a good possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item for you today is the Bonneville Primary Care Network Funding Request. At the regular meeting of council on May 9, 2023, a delegation was made by the Bonneville Primary Care Network, providing information on and requesting funding for the Hive Integrated Youth Hub Initiative. Council directed administration to bring their request back to a future meeting of council for your consideration. To date, the MD of Bonneville has provided financial support to the new PCN Hive Integrated Youth Hub Initiative indirectly through the annual contribution being made by the Bonneville and District FCSS to this initiative. The MD also provides financial support to another PCN program, the Bonneville Child and Adolescent Mental Health Collaborative, also known as the Mental Health Navigator, in the amount of $25,000 per year since 2016. As a note, council has committed to this annual contribution up to and including next year, 2024. Attached for council's information are the following. Appendix A is the PCN delegation presentation from May 9. And an appendix B is from the youth hives website, their regular levels of sponsorship. Reference to our strategic plan, this does tie back to goal number one, building a prosperous and sustainable community. And our cost and sources of funding, the amount requested is $50,000. Our source of funding options, should council choose to move forward and approve this request, is, one option is council's grants to individuals and non-government organizations budget. The remaining balance, however, as of June 2nd is of only approximately $6,000. The overall budget for 2023 was $102,000, which is near depleted. The other option also within our 2023 operating budget currently is any contributions equal or less than $5,000 can, we can direct the PCN to apply for the Community Action Grant or apply through the donations, sponsorship, and recognition policy. Administration's recommended action is that council directs, council directs administration to advise the Bonneville Primary Care Network to apply for funding support for their Hive Integrated Youth Hub Initiative through the municipalities' available community grant programs and policies.
What happened over there, Al? All right, thank you. Just looking for a motion, gentlemen? Some comments? Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
So they, how much money do you know? I should know too, because I'm on the FCSS board here. But do you know how much money they've received from the FCSS in the last while, in the last year or two?
I believe from their presentation, they stated they received $25,000. It was in their final page where they presented their financials. And sometimes papers better. It is.
That sounds all right to me. I think you're right.
I could just interject there really quickly too. They also got the $50,000 from the Town of Bonneville and so on top of the FCSS. So they're just asking us to match the Town of Bonneville's contribution.
Correct. Yes, through the REVE, I can confirm that the FCSS contribution from the Bonneville and District FCSS is $25,000.
So we've already funded them indirectly then?
Indirectly, yes.
So is the, is this a year after year ask or is it just a one-time?
Current, through the REVE, currently their request is just for this year to match the town's contribution, which was recently approved at $50,000.
So if we go with count, the option number one, they're for the council directing them to apply for funding through the community grant programs and policies, how much can they actually apply for through that? Like, would they qualify for?
Through the REVE, currently, the Community Action Grant has one remaining intake scheduled for October 15th of this year for either an event or program sponsorship up to a value of $5,000. Or there is a $5,000 capital grant stream, which is also available. Those two are the ones remaining this year until next year.
Well, I'll go ahead and make option number one then, that we direct them to apply through the community grant funding?
So what did we do? We did something with these guys last year, I think, right? The year they opened?
Through the REVE, we have not provided any funding directly to the Hive.
Yes, go ahead.
So Deputy Reeve Fadav, just to clarify, I think you'd said, so we fund FCSS and then they fund them $25,000? And so I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if So if we funded them for another 25, then we're kind of matching the Town of Bonneville?
No.
No.
So FCSS, which is separate from the town, this organization gave 25, and then the town, sorry.
Sorry, Counselor. Then the Town of Bonneville donated another $50,000 on top of that.
But the 25 that FCSS gave, does not, does this not come from the MD of Bonneville or no?
I mean, we do fund the FCSS in Bonneville and Coal Lake and partially, it is funded that way.
Well, that's my question was that, could we say if we funded them now for 25? Could we kind of saying, well, no, you're getting 25 from us through FCSS and another 25 directly? Is that, would that work, do you think? I'm not sure.
We're not giving 25 directly on top of that, right?
No, I'm saying, let's, if we did this now though, if we made a motion, because I mean Josh's motion was that they could only get 5,000. They're asking for 50. So I'm not sure if that.
All right, we have a motion by Counselor Crick. On behalf of council, the council directs administration to be, to advise the Bonneville Primary Care Network to apply for funding support for their Hive Integrated Youth Club Initiative through the municipalities' available community grants, program, and policies. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Case, yes, go ahead, Counselor Skarsen.
So so that'd be the same pot that we're talking about here later on with the Humane Society and the Snowmobile Club?
Through the REVE, that is correct. This is the same budget for all Community Action Grant applications, which is currently just over $160,000 of available funding. However, we do have a number of requests, which we will be discussing later this meet next as well. I can attest that we have quite a few requests on a regular basis, whether it's through the Community Action Grant or other requests for funding.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
So there's not really a, there's not another fund that this would come out of besides that? Unless it was like our general revenues kind of thing?
Through the REVE, our current established budget for Community Action Grant and sponsorships equates to $200,000. However, in addition to that, we do have council's giving, which equates to another $102,000 on top of that.
Mr. Reeve, I just want to clarify, Counselor Crick's motion then, so if that passes, they could apply for up to $5,000? Is that?
Through the REVE, that is correct. The way the policy is worded for the Community Action Grant Program is once the budget is depleted, we will no longer be awarding anything for 2024. So at that point, if any community group or event wanted to request sponsorship, the only other option is either directly through council or through, if it's under $2,000, through the donations and sponsorship policy. Because at that point, we, our budget will have been depleted.
Mr. Reeve, I just think it's a good cause, I think. You know, mental health kind of stuff that we've been looking at for years. And I just think giving them 5,000 is not all that, I don't know.
Whatever, we'll have that motion made, I guess. And then I'll ask though, if that motion doesn't pass, can we make another motion?
Okay. Well, let's deal with the motion we have. I'm going to call for the vote. That's defeated.
Well, I'd like to see, I mean, I'd like to see us sponsor these guys for something today, but I just don't know where we're coming out of exactly, right? 25,000, let's say.
Through the REVE, right now, the other option could be through the council's budget, which currently still has $6,000 available. So council's grants to individuals and non-government organizations budget. That does have 6,000. The other option is the donations, sponsorship, and recognition policy. And let me just confirm what that balance is right now. Remaining balance there of the $30,000 is $6,500 for 2023.
So if they were to, if they were to go through, I should ask this before maybe, but the kind of, the Community Action Grant policy for 25 or 50, that would come out to council or would that be you deciding that?
Through the REVE, for the Community Action Grant for a sponsorship of a program, there is a limit in that policy up to $5,000.
Yeah, but I mean, you've got these other guys, I'm looking at the next one already, applying for 200,000 and 145,000 of that account.
Through the REVE, that is correct for capital projects, so.
Oh, that's not what this would be. They couldn't use that as a capital, it's not an operating?
If it's, if it's not a building or a structure or something, it would be operating instead of capital.
Go ahead, Al.
I think, Mr. Reeve, members of council, aside from the amounts in each of these grant programs that have been depleted, I would be remiss if I didn't let council know all of your options. And of course, you have reserves. So if you wanted to give 25 or 50 or 100 or whatever number you wanted, there are reserves as well that this could come out of. So I just, it would not be my recommendation, but I didn't, I didn't want council to go away thinking, gee, we only had five in this account and 65 in that account, and we couldn't do what we wanted to do. There is money in both cash flow reserve and a group of other reserves as well.
Deputy Reeve Fadav?
Yeah, it's quite unfortunate that the ask came so late. I know that there was problems with getting the email out to the proper people for this presentation. So I know it was late, but it would have been nice to have that information when, at time of budget as well, right? So I know we're kind of looking for money now, but it's
Was it an option in our event to say it could be an extra budget? Because it is still April 24, right? Other names here?
Through the REVE?
Like, it says for the budget from, me, for the budget from April 23 to March 24. Right? So if there was something budget for next year, would they get that money for their Q4 or which should be gathered in March and next year?
Through the REVE, that's definitely possible. Currently, the way they worded their request was for the 2023 year. It may be, we could turn that into their 2023, 24 fiscal year.
Well, this is, I don't know, it is a top says budget is from March, April to March 24.
So you're saying we could just bring it forward to the budget in November and for January? That makes sense to me.
I'm just trying hard not to take it out of reserve or out of, right? It's like, you don't have to touch that.
I guess that'd be better. But at least it's something we can try to budget for, right? I think it's important for sure. I mean, these guys do a lot of good things for the, for a lot of people, right? So.
Through the REVE, I can confirm that the current balance in the Community Action Grant Reserve is $366,781.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm just going to make a motion to fund them for 50,000 out of the Community Action Grant Reserve. Because we can top that reserve up with our budget in budget, you know, for next year. So either do it now or do it then, but. So we either do it now or do it then, but I don't think it makes a difference. So I'll make that motion.
Well, do you typically have applications for that? Like is, is, is this, no, you don't?
Through the Reeve, no. The only way any funding comes out of a reserve is through council motion and we don't have a policy other than your approval.
Aren't they, don't they have like twenty-five already? Like, or no?
From FCSS.
I think we'd better off just to wait till budget myself.
All right, well, we have a motion, gentlemen, moved by councillor Swagert. On behalf of council, the council approves the request for funding by the Bonneville Primary Health, sorry, Primary Care, for their Hive Integrated Youth Hub Initiative in the amount of fifty thousand to be funded from the community action grant reserve. Any discussion on this motion? Yes?
Did you say fifteen or fifty?
Five, zero.
Okay. Well, then I definitely think we should wait till budget.
Deputy Reeve Fadav?
So, so the, a little bit of clarification, so you're saying take the fifty out of community action grants and then top it up with, with what? Because we're, I think we're at, how much do we have on there like now?
Three hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one right now?
Yeah, so then I know there's been, you know, requests done by other things, so are we going to stick to that budget? Or, or what you're saying is we're going to take money out of our, our reserves to top up the community action grant reserve?
No, I'm not sure if I'm saying that necessarily and clarify, because right now there's, there's a hundred and sixty-five thousand in the community action grant to be given away this year. And is that over and above the three hundred and sixty-six thousand?
Through the Reeve, the one, that hundred and sixty thousand is within our current 2023 operating budget, yes, for the community action grant.
So, and but it's not part of the reserve?
That is correct.
Okay, so there's, yeah, there are two different pots of money.
Okay, deputy, sorry, councillor, someday, maybe.
Yeah, I just want to say, like, how come we give everything that they, that they're asked? Like, why don't, why can't we compromise like we did with the center there, the music center, we dropped down the request, we automatically have to give the fifty? Like, uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm not for giving fifty. I'll just confirm that.
Councillor Skarson?
Yeah, we don't, we can give them twice as what they're asking too. I mean, it's up to us, right? So we have to make that decision. I get what councillor Swagert's saying, I mean, it's, you're kind of doing it now or doing it later, right, with the budget and, but I'm not opposed to, I think, I think they can wait until budget as well. I think that at least it's in there as a line item for next year and, and I, I think they'd be fine with that money in the first quarter of next year, right, which would they, they would get, you know?
Any other discussion?
I'll withdraw my motion then.
And then just make a motion to bring it back to budget?
I think that's option three.
And Mr Reeve, if I could add, and for council's consideration is that these things often then become permanently embedded in an operating budget?
And is, and is it council's determination this is a one-time grant of fifty thousand dollars or is this going to be? Lifetime.
Is this going to be lifetime?
Well, we'll have to deliberate that at budget time.
Yeah, but it's, it's true.
No, you're right. And when they presented, it didn't look like they had a really good way of funding going forward. It was, they're going to need it forever. So, so you got my motion rewritten there? Thank you.
All right. Thank you councillor Swagert for making this motion that council directs administration to bring back the request for funding by the Bonneville Primary Care Network for their Hive Integrated Youth Hub Initiative for the amount of fifty thousand to the 2024 budget deliberations for consideration. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Okay, thank you. I think we have a nine, are we, where are we going here? Nine point three point seven or nine point three point eight?
Seven.
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 Sorry.
Uh, this report is for the Community Action Grant 2023 Major Capital Project Stream Confirmation. At the April eleventh, 2023 Regular Meeting of Council, the four qualified community action grant major capital project applications were presented to council pursuant to Policy 3C point zero one two, which is community action grant policy. On May ninth, council passed a motion approving funding for two of those projects, submitted by the Grand Center Golf and Country Club for sixty-six thousand and to the Clayton Bellamy Foundation for the Arts in the amount of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, both funded by the Parks and Recreation Development Fund Reserve. Administration is requesting a decision from council regarding the remaining two major capital project applications, which were submitted by the Coal Lake Snowmobile Club and the Lakeland Humane Society. Copies of all the submitted application information and a scoring matrix based on the policy criteria were provided to council prior to the April 2023 delegation presentation. Attached for council's information is a copy of Policy 3C point zero one two, as well as the May ninth council meeting request for decision report presented to council. These projects and this grant program refers back to goal number one of our strategic plan, which is to build a prosperous and sustainable community. The costs and sources of funding associated with this report, Coal Lake Snowmobile Club application requested amount was two hundred thousand dollars. The Lakeland Humane Society's application amount was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Sources of funding options, currently in the 2023 Community Action Grant Budget, we have a balance of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, which had an annual budget of a hundred and seventy thousand for 2023. Our, we also have our Community Action Grant Reserve with a balance of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. Administration's recommended action is at council's discretion.
Mr Reeve, question?
Yes. Uh, how, why is there money in the reserve? Is that just carried over from year to year to year? Is that? The community action grant reserve, about three hundred and sixty-six thousand is carried over?
Through the Reeve, that originally was established by previous councils as the Industry Cares Legacy Fund.
Okay, it's carried over.
And then once, I believe it was two years ago, or yeah, two years ago, we have a motion from council requesting its conversion to a community action grant program, which took over as far as grant funding goes to community groups for capital projects mainly.
Okay, so that money will stay there next year and the year after and it will just keep-
That is, through the Reeve, that is correct.
It'll just be a reserve, but the community action grant budget amount is, is it generally a hundred and seventy thousand a year that will add to that? Well-
Through the Reeve, the annual budget was set at a hundred and seventy thousand because the overall community grants budget was set at seven hundred thousand by council this year. Five hundred thousand of that is for our community operating grant program and then two hundred thousand was split between the community action grant and the donations and sponsorship policy.
Uh, sorry, Mr Reeve, one last question then. How many, if we fund these two groups, you know, any amount, how much, how many other smaller groups are there kind of currently in the queue to get funding? I mean, I guess I'm making that point because I, I hate to bleed that down to, you know, the hundred and whatever, sixty-five down to zero and then the small groups can't get anything. So, any idea sort of off the cuff what?
Well, there's still, there's still a deadline in October. I mean, there could be twenty more people, right? Like-
Yeah, but I think maybe we know sort of how much. Because you don't want to get rid of the groups that are asking for two grand and five grand and three grand or whatever, because there's no money left, but I don't know.
Okay, councillor Skarson and councillor Crick.
My only question was, is, I thought, didn't we decide this already when we made the first motion? Like, I thought this was all taken care of already.
Uh, through the Reeve, with the approval of the two, there was, administration was unclear on what the decision was on the remaining two. Especially because it wasn't actually funded through our community action grant budget. I know, I was looking for additional clarity on, on the status of these two.
I thought it was pretty clear in my head, but maybe I was wrong.
Okay, councillor Crick?
No, I can, I, I was going to basically ask the same question, because I thought we would, we went through it, we funded, picked two and funded them. But I guess the money, I was under the impression that the money was coming out of the community action grant balance of a hundred and sixty-five thousand to fund those two that we did last in, in April. So, it came, but it came out of Parks and Recreation Reserve, I think.
Through the Reeve, that is correct. That was the motion.
So, I'd say we should just, well, there's other projects that are MD projects, like the trail by Emerald Estates there, trying to come into town, that we need to get that into the budget. And if we're, we just took out money from the Parks and Recreation Reserve to fund these other two community action grants, that's the only reason there's money sitting there still.
Yes, go ahead councillor.
I'd like to deal with these though. The, and I'll, I guess I'll just put in a plug for the snow go group. Hundreds of kilometers of trail to groom. Munichor also has hundreds of kilometers of, of trail to groom, but they're in desperate need of a groomer also. And so we're going to get, like, if we don't maybe fund some of these groups, they're going to just come to us anyway for, for help, I, I guess. So, you know, and the Coal Lake Club has put in for CFAP grants and so it's a matching grant, so they'll, they'll just lose that grant. And I'm not saying we have to give them two hundred thousand, but I certainly think it'd be nice to help with that. And then the Humane Society, I'm not sure. Uh, we fund, we fund Bonneville, I think, for fifty thousand and, you know, maybe we can consider the same amount for the Coal Lake Humane Society. I mean, they're a service in our area that they're not funded by, you know, provincial or federal or anything, so I, I guess it's all donations.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr Reeve.
Thing, Mr Reeve, just for clarity for council, regardless of what, what programs council chooses to fund or not fund, there was some confusion with us when we left that council meeting, because there was a decision made to fund certain groups, but then it was silent on the other ones. So we weren't sure, because there was no motion denying a particular, uh, funding to a particular group, we weren't sure if it was just by silence that meant no, or, but there was no motion denying those requests. So we just wanted some clarity on that. If that, if, if, if it was council's aim that the silence meant that council wasn't interested in funding those groups, then, then this RFD could wrap up pretty quick. We just weren't sure what, what the silence meant.
But I thought the way you guys were presenting it to us, that we had four options, pick whatever options and then it's, that's the way I felt, the, the way it was presented. So I thought once we were done, it was done, we gave to two and it was over, but I, I didn't realize, I guess when we switched it up there at the end to take it from a different fund, then, you know, the options kind of weren't that clear as, I can see your point.
That is, that is exactly what happened, is if it had just come out of the community action grant and had been depleted, then we would have understood. Like, because we took that money out of the recreation, Parks and Recreation Reserve, that left this fund with money, which then left applications on the table with money still in the fund.
Yeah, left two with the same amount of money.
Correct.
So, Mr Reeve, I'll make a motion to fund the Snowmobile Club of seventy-five thousand.
I would also remind council, I think council received the letter that Mr Lester had sent out. They had reduced their ask from two hundred to one twenty-five in the letter he sent out and we forwarded that letter onto council late last week.
Through the Reeve, I would also add that one of the criteria of the community action grant policy is that any matching dollars be secured at the time of application. And at the time of the application, the amount they had secured was a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, well, we're going to wait for a motion and you guys want to discuss a bit first. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I would just, I just wanted to say that I, I'm not opposed to giving these guys money to you. I don't, I'm not comfortable with completing this fund in June. I would rather have this discussion maybe in December. I would, I don't want to leave money in there either. I mean, I'd rather have it all gone by the end of year, but not at the, in the middle of the year, right? So, I mean, I, I'd probably be more in favor of this in December, let's say, as opposed to in June.
Or October, November.
Yeah, Mr Reeve, like, I, you know, I would change my motion to a hundred and twenty-five as they're asked, but I'm just feeling council and it doesn't sound like council's all that interested in funding it anyway.
Well, just my question is if they get seventy-five and they have, they have to match a grant of whatever, where are they going to get the rest of the money to, so why even do it? So I-
Well, they've got, apparently they've, they've put aside a hundred thousand, like they've fundraised a hundred thousand.
A hundred and twelve, that's what they told us.
And so then this, but so, because their ask was to cover a machine that was, you know, maybe like a brand new state-of-the-art machine and I've talked to the president, president since and, you know, of course, they're willing to maybe not buy a brand new machine, but try to source out something cheaper. So I, yeah, and you're right, I, I don't want to just give them seventy-five if they can't even use it. But I'm just not sure if council's willing to go, you know, maybe to a hundred.
So if we did give and they can't get a grant to match, what happens if the money comes back?
They return it.
Mr Reeve, members of council, that would be my, my thought is that the money would be, we, we provide them with a letter indicating the council had approved a grant in, in amount of X number of dollars-
When it happens.
Yeah, to be, to be provided with the successful receipt of the grant money.
Yeah, I think that's great. Okay, thank you. Sorry, cut you off there, Deputy Reeve.
No problem. Like I say, we did, we did provide them funding for a grooming machine three, four years ago. Uh, they, uh, they decided to sell it to get something better. I thought it'd be a little bit more of a game plan and, uh, I mean, we've, you know, we've supported them. Uh, you know, one of the comments I've heard from, from one of my neighbors is, uh, you know, you're going to support the Snowmobile Club, but you're not going to support a non-for-profit organization like, like the SPCA, right? So, I mean, I'm, I'm just debating the two. I, I appreciate what they do, but it's also, you know, we, we did provide them money and they did buy a grooming machine, machine in the past.
How long ago was that?
About three, four years ago.
And they don't have that no longer?
No, they decided to sell it.
Okay. Yeah, councillor, such a-
Yeah, well, we want to promote tourism. I, I think them group having, taking care of trails helps tourism. I don't know to what extent, but, uh, I'm, I'm for this.
All right, yes, go ahead.
Uh, through the Reeve, there was a question asked earlier by councillor Swagert about the number of pending other applications. We do have six, seven, we have eight pending, um, five thousand dollar requests and two moderates, um, pending requests. Moderates being for sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Just to be clear, I'm not opposed to, to them. I mean, that's why we supported them in the past, right? You know, it was part of that. They, you know, they figured that the market was good for, for them to sell the machine to get some extra money. I don't know if they were looking at, uh, I really don't know what their strategy was to that, right? But we funded them already for that and that's, that's all I'm saying. Um, I'm definitely supportive of tourism, but I mean, it's, it's also, uh, yeah, it's, it's different.
Do, do you know what kind of groomer they bought before or do you have any recollection of?
No, I mean, I just know it. It was a groomer.
Yeah.
It worked fairly well, maybe because they bought a used one, maybe it gave them some issues. So if they can buy, if they can buy new now, if they go to buying used, are they going to be in the same, same position again?
Just a, just a comment about the groomers, because I've seen, like, the Iron Horse Trail, the groomer's the thing they tow behind, the machine. So, because, and it's, the groomer grooms the trail. So the machine they're using though is like a, one of the machines like we have at the ski hill. You know, like one of those snow cats or whatever that pulls the groomer. But that, like Munichor has one, but it's, like I said, it's old and they're having great difficulties where they're trying to, you know, they paid a lot to get it fixed. They're having issues with getting it fixed. The Coal Lake group has a groomer that they can pull behind, but they were burning out sleds towing this thing, or burning out side by sides. So they, they thought, well, let's try to get something bigger that we can tow this with.
So aren't we talking a machine here or are we talking about something that we're pulling behind?
What, what we funded was a machine.
Like, aren't we looking at like a snow cat kind of thing? Or like, maybe I'm confused there.
Well, yeah.
Because the snow, the snow cat is a groomer, as, as far as I can remember. Because the snow, the snowcat is a groomer, as, as far as I can remember. They might pull a float behind a groomer, but we're talking about a snowcat here, I'm quite sure.
Yeah, that's what they wanted to buy, right?
Yes. We're not talking about whatever they tow behind.
Well, that's part of it. See, 'cause their original package shows the, like, the snowcat thing, shows the thing they're towing behind, and, you know, so the price was like four hundred and some thousand, right? Four hundred and sixty thousand or something, so they're gonna have to, you know, we're not willing, I guess, to put that much, or two hundred thousand into it, they're gonna have to downgrade to what they're gonna get.
Any other discussion on this motion right now? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Councilor Swigert, for making a motion on behalf of the council here, that council approves requests for funding for the Cold Lake Snowmobile Club for their two thousand twenty-three major capital project applications through the community action grant program in the amount of seventy-five thousand to be funded from the two thousand twenty-three community action grant operating budget. Any discussion on this? Yes, Deputy Reeve, if.
Again, it doesn't solve the question to, there was two, two asks, one was from the S P C A, so we're only shedding light on the Cold Lake Snowmobile Club, but not the other ones. What's, what are we doing to that?
Like, I didn't think I was gonna make a motion for both of them. Can't we make another motion, though? I'm not, I'm, yeah.
You're gonna do two separate ones?
Yeah, it makes sense to do two separate, 'cause if I made a motion for both, you may turn them both down, right? Make a motion separately, you can turn one or the other down, but doesn't make sense to make a motion for both.
Because, yeah, because one of the suggestions that I, that I read, it was, you know, X amount for this, X amount for that, so.
Yeah, I'd rather do it separately.
Okay, sounds good.
Is there more flexibility, I think?
I just had a question again. So, we have how much left total? Hundred and sixty-eight?
We have a hundred and sixty-five thousand left in our budget this year.
With eighty-one thousand, and eighty-one and a half thousand being requested already in the other grants that you listed there.
Approximately, yes.
Plus three hundred and sixty-six thousand in the reserve fund that you, you may never use.
Okay, any other comments or questions on this motion, gentlemen? Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's defeated. Where to now, gentlemen? Councilor Crick, you have something to say?
Do we need another motion then on the, on the S P C A one, or? Without the S P C A, whatever, the Humane Society, well, based on the, I think, the general consensus of what, what we were thinking last meeting in April there, that we thought it was just done, I'll make the motion to deny the funding on that one.
Is that a motion you're gonna make?
Yeah.
And Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Bit of a discussion now that we've got a motion on the floor.
Yes.
We do fund the, we consistently fund the Bonneville S P C A fifty thousand a year. And we have, we had agreements with the Cold Lake one to look after the dogs that were picked up. So, I would think it would be in our best interest to fund the Cold Lake one as, at least as much as we fund the Bonneville one.
So, we should split the funding then, maybe fifty-fifty between the two of them, is what you're suggesting?
Well, we should fund them both. I don't know how, what kind of funding model they need, but.
Do we, do we, do they take dogs from M D over there?
No.
What do you now? Do they have an S P C A there, or is that part of it?
That's, that's, they moved out of the city.
Sorry, yeah, they moved out of the city, sorry, yeah, it's great.
Is it our peace officers that take dogs around?
Yes.
Do they, do they, does the M D pay when they're out of the dollar?
Correct, they're, we do pay an impound fee.
Yeah, but I, I was making the, the, bringing to your attention, though, we had arrangements with the Cold Lake one to take dogs. The Bonneville one, I don't think were taking dogs. They were ta, we were paying for a spay and neuter program through the Bonneville one, but they wouldn't accept dogs, they, they just couldn't.
So, the Cold Lake one even exist anymore?
Yeah, but it moved to Terramere Kennels, that location on fifty-five.
Are they still called the, are they a private, no?
No, it's, it's still, what's it called? Lakeland Humane Society.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Just to give a little clarity to the S P C A, so we have two spots at the S P C A in Bonneville. They hold two spots for us. Sometimes when they fill up with dogs that are picked up with, by the peace officers, we might have to get additional spots. At the Lakeland Humane Society in Cold Lake or outside of Cold Lake, we just, they have spots there, we just pay the impounding fee, whatever the going rate is, so we are allowed to use that one also.
So, we're paying them directly for?
Yeah.
Same, same, same both ways, though?
Yes, we, we also have to pay through the S P C A in Bonneville. It's at a little bit reduced rate in Bonneville, but we pay at both places.
There's also a tax, later, later on here, we've got a tax cancellation request, penalty request from the Lakeland Humane Society, too, which I'm not sure what, where that's going, or what that's all about, but it'd be kinda random if we gave them, gave them money, and there's outstanding taxes they're owing.
Mr. Reeve, we still, we're funding Bonneville, we still have to fund, I think we have to fund Cold Lake, they're, they're a service for the area. Anyway, you made the motion, so.
Okay, I'm gonna read the motion. Go ahead.
Well, I'd just say once again, so are you, like, are we looking at a fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year thing? Again, that would be more of a budget item as well, like, I know these guys are asking fifty grand to bit, like, to build something, I think, right, to add on or whatever, and I wouldn't, like, I wouldn't bring that up unless they were asking, right, for fifty thousand bucks to operate with, right, so.
All right. Moved by Councilor Crick on behalf of council, that council denies requests for funding by the Lakeland Humane Society for their two thousand twenty-three major capital project through the community action grant program. Any discussion on this motion, any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. This is defeated. There we go.
So, Mr. Reeve, I'd love to make a motion to fund them, and I, I'm just, need some input from council, too, how much we're willing to fund them. Do we do the same as Bonneville, and fund them fifty thousand? I mean, they were looking for funding for a specific project, hundred and forty-five thousand for repairs and roofs and whatever they were doing.
I think it's apples and oranges, though. You can't say Bonneville, because that's operating money right there, and these guys are looking for money to build something with.
Yeah, no, you're right, and they've never asked for, I guess, operation money, I don't think, maybe they have, but.
Well, they're brand-new, so they couldn't have asked too many times.
Well, they're not really brand-new, 'cause they just moved from Cold Lake.
Yeah, I know, but still, that's a brand-new.
New, new building, yeah. I'll make a motion to fund them for seventy-five thousand. They're asking for a hundred and forty-five.
Okay. Yeah, we just have a motion by Councilor Swigert on behalf of council, that council approves requests for funding for the Lakeland Humane Society for the two thousand twenty-three major capital project application through the community grant program in the amount of seventy-five thousand to be funded from the two thousand twenty-three community action grant operation budget. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's defeated.
We'll have lots of money there next year, for sure, then.
Okay.
Well, six months from now is December, so we can have the same discussion.
Okay, I think we're, can move on from this?
I hope so.
We made a motion to fund them, both, the vote was defeated, so. Kind of like stop and limbo.
Yes.
But we could bring it back to budget, I guess, and then discuss it there.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, from a procedural perspective, actually, staff isn't in limbo, there was a motion made to fund, and it was defeated. So, we are.
It's defeated.
It was, it was defeated, so from, from our perspective.
We're good.
We have the answers that we had come for.
We'll go on to nine point three point eight, then. What? Okay, sorry, five-minute break. Welcome back. We're going on to nine, three point eight. I think it's addition to the agenda.
Yes. This report is our two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five provincial F C S S funding agreement amendment report. So, the province of Alberta announced in April of two thousand twenty-three that they were increasing the funding for the Family and Community Support Services, F C S S, two thousand twenty-three budget by five million dollars. This equates to a four-point-five percent increase per year in funding two municipalities towards their F C S S programs. Additionally, as this provincial grant requires municipalities to provide a twenty percent matching contribution, as it is based on an eighty-twenty split partnership agreement, the province has submitted a request to the M D of Bonneville to increase their contribution as well, and to sign an associated amended funding agreement. The amended funding agreement they provided us is for the period from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five for our increased contribution amount, and they have requested this agreement be returned to them no later than June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. So, presented there, just to summarize, is the contribution values. The current, prior to the amendment request, in two thousand twenty-three, we were receiving a grant from the province of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. They're proposing an increase to four hundred and two thousand, nine eighty this year, and then in the next two consequ, uh, consequential years, it's bumped up to five thousand dollars more to four oh seven. So, consequently, our increase, we're looking at, instead of a contribution this year of ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, it goes to a hundred thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. And just to clarify, how the M D utilizes this funding is we, it's an in and an out to us. We directly disseminate it to the Cold Lake and District F C S S, and the Bonneville and District F C S S, based on our population's percentages that they serve. So, this reference back to our strategic plan is it does support goal number one, building a prosperous and sustainable community. The reference to provincial legislation is the Alberta F C S S Act, Section Three, and their F C S S regulation, Section Five. Just to be, just for, add a clarity, the additional cost we would be looking for in order to meet this new, this new budget amount for two thousand twenty-three is three thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. For council's information, if we do sign this agreement, it does impact our two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five contributions as well. And if, based on our current contribution amount, it's just an increase of four thousand, three hundred and eighty-five per year. Source of funding, this money is not currently in the two thousand twenty-three F C S S operating budget. Another current budget source, two options are council's grants to individuals and non-government organizations budget, which currently has a remaining balance of approximately six thousand dollars, or the community services grants to individuals and non-government organizations budget, specifically for the donation, sponsorship, and recognition policy. Once we receive a written request from both F C S Ss, as per the policy, we would be able to, to use this, this budget specifically, which has a remaining balance of sixty-five hundred dollars. Administration's recommended action is that council directs administration to advise both the Bonneville and District F C S S, and the Cold Lake and District F C S S to jointly apply for a total of three thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars in additional two thousand twenty-three funding support from the M D of Bonneville through the donation, sponsorship, and recognition policy.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion, gentlemen?
Could I just ask for clarity first, Mr.?
Yeah, yes, yes, you may.
So, we have to, we have to fund them, what, so why, do they all, every year have to apply, or do we just fund them, because we have to anyway?
Through the reef, each year during budget deliberations, the two F C S Ss do provide us with their requested budgets, and provide us with a budget of their, their upcoming year. However, their amounts have always gone consequential with what the province has been providing us. So, in previous years, the province came to us and told us, okay, we're willing to give you three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. Therefore, our consequential input into our budget for council's approval was ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. So, currently, the current process is, although council approves it every year during budget deliberations, the value is dependent on the provincial government grant amount. Unfortunately, this year, they just increased it.
I guess my point was, I thought we could kinda make it easier for you guys if you just, you're trying, you cut them a check, so they don't have to keep applying, 'cause we have to do it anyway, but if that's what you want, I'll make the motion for number one.
Yeah, and for clarity for council, the, the reason for this is, the thirty-nine hundred dollars this is, was not budgeted for in two thousand twenty-three, we'll come back and budget and have the other money as part of a regular F C S S budget for next year. So, it's either pay it this way through a grant, or take it out of the council spending budget, or out of a reserve. So, this, this is, this is one of the easiest ways to do it.
Yes. Okay, yeah, Councilor, thank you, Councilor Swigert, for making a motion on behalf of council. That council directs administration to advise the Bonneville and District F C S S, and the Cold Lake and District F C S S to jointly apply for a total of three thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars in additional two thousand twenty-three funding support from the municipal district of Bonneville through the donation, sponsorship, and recognition policy, recognition policy, yes. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Brain freeze.
That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
On to nine point four point one. Mr. Vespolco.
Through the reef, Hall of Council, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, the first, first council, or cancellation request that I bring to council is, these are ones that, requests that comply with council's current policy. And just as a reminder, council's current policy was to merely have a policy to put all of the requests that meet a certain criteria together, so there was consistency in the decision of individual requests meeting the same, same criteria. That's why this first one is a request for tax penalty cancellation complies with municipal policy. The M D policy number one point zero one one, property tax, uh, property tax penalty cancellation policy establishes a uniform and consistent approach for council to address property tax penalty payment cancellation requests in the M D. When administration receives property tax cancellation requests for council's consideration, the requests are placed in one of two categories, requests complying with the criteria of policy one dot zero one one, and requests not complying with criteria of policy one dot zero one one. The, the, three of the property tax cancellation requests submitted comply with The three of the property tax cancellation requests submitted comply with policy 1 dot 011. These requests are summarized in Appendix A. The property tax penalty cancellation, MD policy number 1 dot 011, and penalty cancellation administration process flow charts are also attached as Appendix B. Appendix C includes the requests and the tax notices of these properties. The reference to the legislation is Municipal Government Act, Section 346 and 347. The source, the cost and source of funding, approval of this recommendation will result in a reduction of property tax penalty revenue of $30.44 and a reduction of the allowance for doubtful accounts of $655.31. Council's decision will be communicated to the property owners through telephone calls and follow-up letters. Administration recommend, recommended action, that council approves the cancellation of tax penalties in accordance with municipal policy as follows. For tax roll number 6106082014, lot 13, block 1, plan 102, 3560, the penalty amounts of $304.42 and $30.44. For roll number 6009231002, lot 1, block 1, plan 122, 2832, penalty amount is $128.85. For roll number 6307033003, located at the southeast of 3, 637 west of the fourth, penalty amount $222.04. Council options, council option number one, that council approves the cancellation of penalties in accordance with municipal, municipal policy as follows, as I just read. Council option number two, that council denies the cancellation of tax penalties for the tax, tax roll numbers 6106082014, 6009231002, and 6307033003. And option three, that council directs administration to bring back additional information regarding the tax penalty cancellation requests for tax roll number 6106082014, 6009231002, and 6307033003 to a future meeting of council as discussed.
Thank you. Councillor Swagert.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve cancellation of those three.
All right, thank you councillor Swagert for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves a cancellation of tax penalties in accordance with municipal policy as followed, and three, that Mr. Visbalco mentioned below. Any discussion on this motion? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that's carried, on to nine point four point two.
The next one is a request for tax cancellation, roll number 6303132003. MD policy number 1 dot 011, property tax penalty cancellation by law establishes a uniform and consistent approach for council to address property tax penalty payment cancellation requests in the MD. When administration receive property, receives property tax cancellation requests for council consideration, the requests are placed in one of two categories, requests for complying with the criteria of policy 1 dot 011 and requests not complying with criteria of policy 1 dot 011. This property tax cancellation request submitted does not comply with policy 1 dot 011. The request received is requesting penalty cancellations incurred for the 2021 tax year due to not receiving the tax notice in 2021. The purchase date of the property was June 22, 2021, but was not registered at Alberta land titles until December 22, 2021. The request is for the following penalty amounts, 2021 October penalty, $197.31, and the 2022 March penalty of $184.16. The total, the total penalty cancellation request is $381.47. The property owner paid all outstanding levies and penalties on August 19, 2022. The request and the tax notice for the property are attached as Appendix A. The property tax penalty cancellation, MD policy 1 dot 011, and penalty cancellation administrative process flow chart are attached as Appendix B. Reference to legislation is the Municipal Government Act, Section 346 and 347. Cost and source of funding, approval of this recommendation will result in a reduction of the allowance of doubtful accounts in the tune of $381.47. Council's decision will be communicated to the property owner through telephone calls and follow-up letters. Administration recommends that council denies the tax penalty cancellation request on roll number 6303132003. Council options, that council denies the tax penalty cancellation request for roll number 6303132003, that council approves the tax penalty cancellation request for 6303132003 in the amount of $381.47, and three, that council directs administration to bring back additional information to the tax penalty cancellation request for roll number 6303132003 to a future meeting of council as discussed.
Thank you. Councillor Skarsen.
Just got a few questions. So I guess what's different from this one from some of the other ones? Because it said, like it says here, previous owners had the bill, but they didn't send it to them. I mean, that was exactly what the other guy said.
The, through the reef to all of council, this request was for penalties in 2021. So what the policy, policy 1 dot 011 is really aggregating all of those requests for the 2022 September penalty that, that was received. So because this was 2021, it couldn't go in that first bucket. So now it's open for council to decide what to do on that.
So if it was, if we got this this time last year, it would have been fine, you're saying?
If, through the reef to all of council, if this request would have come up to February of 2022, this request, it would have been put in the, the first bucket.
And then the other one, just clarity here, so is this true? It says reditured charities are exempt from property taxes?
On the, on the request.
Like it looks like they're noting that out to us, but I don't know, is that actually a thing or?
As it pertains to taxes and assessment at the time in 2021, the property was taxable.
I guess I'm just speaking as a generality, like is that?
What would happen is we would take what the, the nonprofit organization does and run it through what's called the Community Organization Property Tax Exemption Regulation and see if it meets and complies with those criterias in there. We haven't had, I don't have the documentation from me, in front of me to say that we've run it through for this year, but as it pertains to the account right now with the request, the penalty was due to the original levy from the previous owner.
Okay, so take this out of the picture, is that an actual rule that if you're a nonprofit, do you, are you exempt from paying property tax?
If they meet the qualifications for the Community Organization Property Tax Exemption Regulation.
Yeah, so, yes.
So I could bring that back to a future meeting.
I'm just curious, so then, do we have, how many, how many of these do we have in the MD, would you say?
Of municipal, of nonprofits complying? I'd have to go and take a look in our system to see how many we have. That would be something that the, the field assessors would be running through.
But now these guys aren't doing that yet? Is that what you said? You haven't got the paperwork yet for, to exempt them?
I'd have to go and check. Right now, all I have right now is a request for a penalty cancellation for 2021 in the request. But I can bring that back to council if there's more questions in regards to what qualifies under exemption through the Community Organization Property Tax Exemption Regulation.
Yes. Yeah, I'll make the motion to exempt.
Through the reef to all of council, the request here is asking for a cancellation of the existing penalties.
Cancellation of the penalties, sorry, yep. Option number one, two or three?
Oh, I need to pick one now, don't I?
Number two, is that what you're looking at?
Two.
Two, okay.
And Mr. Reeve, members of council, just for some clarity for council with a question that councillor Skarsen asked. So properties that are exempt, and there's a whole list of them, but in particular, a property that is held by a nonprofit organization used solely for community games, sports, athletics, or recreation for the benefit of the general public, or is used for charitable or benevolent purpose that is for the benefit of the general public and owned by a nonprofit organization, or property that is held by a nonprofit organization used to provide senior citizens with lodge accommodations as defined in the Alberta Housing Act, held by and used in conjunction with society as defined in the Agricultural Societies Act, or where the community association is defined in the regulations. And so under, under MGA, and that would be, that is, section 362, I would consider that the, it's used for charitable or benevolent purpose that's for the benefit of the general public and is owned by a nonprofit organization. So I, in future years, they are likely exempt from taxes. The issue in 21 is they bought it late in the year in 21 and the property is still high tax.
Oh.
I was gonna say, so it'd be like we're donating $3,000 bucks a year to them then?
All right, thank you councillor Swagert for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the tax penalty cancellation request for roll number 6303132003 in the amount of $381.47. Any discussion or other discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. On to nine point four. Point four? Or did I miss one there? Yes, I did, nine point four point three.
Okay. This one is a request for tax cancellations, roll number 8650223201. The MD policy number 1 dot 011, property tax penalty cancellation policy establishes a uniform and consistent approach for council to address property tax penalty payments, cancellations, requests in the MD. When administration receives property tax cancellation requests for council's consideration, the requests are placed in one of two categories, requests complying with the criteria of policy 1 dot 011 and requests not complying with the criteria of policy 1 dot 011. This property tax cancellation request submitted does not comply with policy 1 dot 011. Request received is requesting a penalty cancellation incurred for the 2022 tax year and 2021 tax year due to not receiving the 2021 tax notice. The request is for the following penalty amounts, 2021 October penalty, $115.04, the 2022 March penalty, $107.37, the 2022 October penalty, $26.69, 2023 March penalty, $24.91. The total penalty cancellation request is $274.01. The property owner paid the 2021 and 2022 levies in July of 2022. The request and the tax notices for the properties are attached as Appendix A. The property tax penalty cancellation, MD policy number 1 dot 011, and penalty cancellation administration, administrative process flow chart are attached as Appendix B. Reference to legislation, Municipal Government Act 346 and 347. Cost and source of funding, approval of the recommendation will result in a reduction of property tax penalty revenue of $24.91 and a reduction of the allowance for doubtful accounts of $249.10. Council's decision will be communicated to the property owner through telephone calls and follow-up letters. Administration recommends that council deny the tax penalty cancellation request for Council options, that council denies the tax penalty cancellation request on roll number 8650223201. Two, that council approves the tax penalty cancellation request for roll number 8650223201 in the amount of $274.01. Three, that council directs administration to bring back additional information on the property, on the tax penalty cancellation request for roll 8650223201 to a future meeting of, of council as discussed.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Skarsen.
Yeah, so just so I understand, because you just threw a bunch of numbers there, it's, they were late one year and then that notice, that late payment, they get paid so they got another charge, then the same thing happened the following year? Is that right?
Through the reef to all of council, yes.
So then they, so I don't, so they're saying now that they didn't get sent to the right place? Is that what they're saying here?
Through the reef, correct. This property, we had a couple of these requests in the past for properties with this situation. This is not a titled parcel of land, this is a lease. So when we receive information of a new lease, we, we apply or, or assess the property because it's assessable. There were at times with some of these leases that the owner, the information for the owner was coming at a much later date. So as you can see in the appendix, the tax notice, you'll notice that was, the owner was defined as not yet assigned. At the time of sending the tax notices out, we did not have the taxable person information. So this company is asking that because they didn't receive the tax notice, once we did receive the owner information, we sent it out, but we didn't receive that information till the following tax year.
So isn't the, isn't the, like whoever the tax notice go to, isn't that just whose name is on the property?
Through the reef to all of council, that's correct for titled property.
So if I lease a building, then the taxes go then to me, you're saying?
Through the reef to all of council, yes and no. So the way it works is the, the owner of the property is the assessed person. When it's not the owner of the property is when the land is owned by the federal government, the provincial government, or the municipal government. At that point in time, I believe it's section 304, will say that the assessed person is the leaseholder, and that is what this property is. So this is a government lease.
Who owns this land right now then?
The provincial government.
And there, there's a building on it that they're leasing?
Uh, let's see what we have here. This, through the reef to all of council, it looks like it's only land only that they're leasing, no buildings on there.
Oh, but, so, but they, they paid the taxes, but they get, like, when are they paying the taxes, have they, yet? It looks like they've been late every year?
Through the reef to all of council, up until they paid it, I believe it was on the 20, in 22, is that what I said here? Through the reef to all of council, the property owner paid all of the outstanding taxes in July of 2022. So they would have received the 2022 notice in their name and then paid everything up. Now they're asking council to consider canceling the penalties because they did not receive the tax notice in 2021. And just as a kind of refresher from some presentations in the past, the previous councils, the information transfer to municipalities from the province as it pertains to their provincial leases, many times is more delayed than land title, Alberta land titles. So in the past, we have had people who have had lease, provincial leases where they have actually canceled their lease, but it had not yet been registered by the government. So the government hasn't given us notice that that lease has been canceled. And there's been a couple of times where we actually received the notice two, three years after the cancellation date. And there has been in the past, a couple of times, I've actually brought those cancellations to council. And at that time, council's question was, how could we receive it so late? And unfortunately, it's not something that, that, you know, we can respond to.
So is the, does the provincial government pay the taxes before and after? Or is it?
Through the reef to all of council, no. Once the, when the property that's owned by the government, unless it meets some specific criteria, it's exempt from assessment. When it becomes assessable is when it's leased. And then the only person or party who's responsible for the taxes is the leaseholder. So that's, that's the framework of the MGA. And our municipality, having so much crown land, we see these, these situations a lot more often than other municipalities that may have very little crown land or not at all.
And what do we do with those? Like, you're saying you see more late penalties?
Through the reef to all council, no, that there's other municipalities that don't have much crown land to do with.
Yeah, but here, you're saying we see a lot of these, but these, are you saying these are, we see a lot of these getting late penalties? Or no?
We see more than other municipalities that don't have as many. The, the process of the provinces is the same regardless which municipality they're dealing with, with the paperwork.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I, Mr.
Mr. Reeve, I have another question. You may have answered this one, but on the 2021 combined tax notice assessment, you did mention this, it says not yet assigned. So, who did it go to if it wasn't assigned to anyone?
Through the reef, to all of council. When the assessment or the assessed owner is not known or available to the municipality, the municipality is hanging on to those tax notices until we get further information.
Okay, so they didn't get the tax notice, so therefore they didn't pay it until later?
Through the reef, to all of council. Once they received the tax notice in the following year with the levy and the penalties, they did pay it all up.
Yeah, I just don't think they should be paying a penalty for 2021 tax notice if they didn't get it until 2022 or whatever. I don't know.
You can make a motion to deny it and send the late penalties to the provincial government.
Through the reef, to all of council, I don't see the legislative authority to do that.
I was only kidding.
You're being too professional right now.
Yeah, really.
That's good, though.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to, to, or to...
Option two?
Yeah. What are the options here?
Number two.
Number two. Cancel them, yeah. We probably spent more than that discussing it here right there.
Yes. Is this what you'd like? Do you see it? Read it?
Yeah, number two.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Skarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the tax penalty cancellation request for Roll Number 8650223201 in the amount of 200, sorry, $274.01. Any discussion on this motion?
I'll just add that I'm definitely learning lots today, so, good.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Onto 9.4.4.
Okay, the last.
You guys aren't scheduled for like three hours. What are you guys doing here? Sorry, Mr. Smoke, we'll cut you off there.
My final penalty cancellation request is requesting for tax cancellation on Roll Numbers 6201101023 and 6106213033. MD Policy Number 1.011, Property Tax Penalty Cancellation Policy, establishes a uniform and consistent approach for council to address property tax penalty payment cancellation requests in the MD. When administration receives property tax cancellation requests for council's consideration, the requests are placed in one of two categories: requests complying with the criteria of Policy 1.011 and requests not complying with the criteria of Policy 1.011. Two of these property tax cancellation requests submitted do not comply with Policy 1.011. The requests are rece, requests received are summarized in Appendix A. The only criteria these requests did not meet were receiving the requests no later than February of the year after the tax levy, which is February 2023. The requests comply with the remaining criteria of Policy 1.011. The Property Tax Penalty Cancellation MD Policy Number 1.011 and the Penalty Cancellation Administrative Process Flowchart are attached as Appendix B. Appendix C includes the requests and tax notices of the properties. Reference to legislation is the Municipal Government Act, Section 346 and 347. Costs and source of funding: Approval of this recommendation will result in a reduction of the property tax penalty revenue of $135.20 and a reduction of the allowance for doubtful accounts of $323.83. Council's decision will be communicated to the property owners through telephone calls and follow-up letters. Administration recommends that council deny the tax penalty cancellation requests for tax Roll Number 6201101023 and 6106213033. Council options: The council denies the tax penalty cancellation requests for tax Roll Number 6201101023 and 6106213033. Option two: The council approves the tax penalty cancellation requests as follows. For tax Roll Number 6201101023, Lot 7, Block 2, Plan 8221629, the penalty amount of $144.85 and $135.20. For tax Roll Number 6106213033, Lot 32, Block 1, Plan 7521505, penalty amount of $178.98. And option three: The council directs administration to bring back additional information on the tax penalty cancellation requests for tax Roll Number 6201101023 and 6106213033 to a future meeting of council as discussed.
Yes, Counselors Skarsen?
I just got a question about the automatic withdrawal. So, is that only done through the bank, or do you, can people set something up here as well?
There's a couple of automated ways, sorry, through the reef, to all of council. There's a couple of automated ways of getting the payments to taxes. One is, they can apply for a tax payment program through the municipality, or two, they can set it up through the bank, whether it's their own monthly deposit or the bank pays it and they contribute every month to a secondary bank account through their financial institution.
Would you say, I'm just, kind of off topic, do you, what would you say is like the percentage of people that pay monthly as opposed to once a year? You think that's, like, do you think a lot of people take advantage of that, or?
Through the reef, to all of council, there are numerous people who will come onto our payment plan simply because the payments start from January, end in December. And if you're on the payment plan, there is no September penalty. So, there are people who come onto ours, pay one-twelfth of, the way the process is, is they pay one-twelfth of last year's tax levy for the first number of months, five or six months, depending upon when they send the tax notice out. And then, once the new tax levy is established, we subtract what we collected up to that point, and then whatever's remaining divided by, whether it's six months, or in this, this year it's seven months, and that's your new payment plan up until December. So, when it comes for their penalty, the penalty application in September of this year, those properties will not have the penalty because they're already in the municipal program. If the payment plan was outside of the municipal program, if they don't pay their taxes on or before the last day to pay before penalties, which is September 15th, then whatever's remaining on that account would have a penalty for the current year levy.
And so, the banks just know, that's all set up, they know how to do that all, like, all of them can figure that out through you guys or whatever?
Through the reef, to all of council, yes. We did have a financial institution a number of years ago, four years ago, I believe, who missed the date on all of their properties and had a hefty tax bill that they made an application to council to have canceled. And that was denied at that time.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion?
Where's Cherry Wood Drive at?
That's probably.
I would guess.
Mr. Reeve, that, the 1023 tax one, they, that's interesting letter, right? This says that the MD had confirmed they'd paid their taxes, they had paid their taxes, but the bank pulled it out of the account after it had been paid or whatever. It sounds messy to me, and it sounds like, wow.
And through the reef, to all of council, had these submissions been provided to our office prior to the last day of, or on the last day of February of this year, they would have been put in the first batch that would have complied with the request. That's why these two were put together with the statement that the only thing that they didn't match was, they didn't meet the deadline to fit in the first bucket. And on your chart, there is the dates of the days when we received it in the far right on Appendix A, the dates that we actually received the letters.
Yeah, we canceled the rest of this.
March.
Mr. Reeve, I'll make a motion to cancel it. Yes, okay.
Yeah, number two.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Swager, for making the motion. That council approves the tax penalty cancellation request as follows, the two tax roll numbers below. Any discussion on this? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fideya?
Yeah, I have a question in regards to your, one of the appendixes, Appendix C. That was incorrect mailing information. So, do we get that mail back at all, and do we address the incorrect mailing? How is that, how do they know if they're getting it or not?
Through the reef, to all of council. When we send out the tax notices, and with titled property, we start with the mailing address that's been registered at land titles. When we send that out, it's now up to the receiver and Canada Post to get that back to us. There's times where we've got returned tax notices two, three years later. So...
Okay, fair enough.
Two or three years?
That's crazy.
Through the reef, to all of council, yes. Now, why that is, I'm not sure.
We don't know what kind of years, but they're years, yeah. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Just while we wait, I'll make a plug for the, I've been, I've been in my house for 20 years, and I set up the monthly payment 20 years ago, and I haven't even thought about my land taxes once since then. So, I don't know, how, are you kind of, is there a notice so people can realize how to do that, or what?
Through the reef, to all of council, yes. There's a couple of different ways that we do that. When we have property sales, the assessment team receives all the sales for the purposes of doing the valuation. One of the steps that we do is, we contact the property owners, the new sale owners or the new purchaser owners. Sometimes it's via phone call, other times, we go right onto the property. If nobody's home, we leave a callback card and some information there for them. And one of the things is the payment plan. The other thing is, is that any time our tax team, when Tina needs to contact people, new property owners, she also brings that up. So, we do have a pretty decent amount of people who take advantage. We would love to have everybody take advantage of it. It would just makes things so much easier. But, that's up to every individual.
Do you think there'd be pushback if you said that was the only way we will do it anymore?
Through the reef, to all of council, I'd have to first check with legal to see if that's something we can, we can actually eliminate as other methods of payment.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Good.
Did it pass?
Uh, we, yeah, we, that was carried and on to 9.4.5.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great rest of the day.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, I'm here to, we've prepared and amended the master rates bylaw to update Schedule A, Master Rates and Fees Schedule for council's approval. The changes that are included in the draft bylaw 1847, we have removed, under Agriculture Services, we've removed the property line brushing. My apologies, that's a spelling error, that says bushing. And reference to the associated policy as it is no longer relevant. This line was moved to the Transportation Fee Schedule. Under Planning and Development, there's been an addition of a municipal land permit license fee and revision of the name for the roadway license application fee. And under Transportation, there's been the addition of property line brushing and reference to the associated policy. Under Water and Sewer, there's been a revision to the wording for the Water and Sewer System fees to improve clarity and reduce the need for amendments to our documents based on changes to the Town of Bonneville utility rates. Removal of the water service deposit and addition of a hydro vac fee under equipment. Appendix A is attached, Bylaw Number 1847, Master Rate Bylaw Draft, and Appendix B is the proposed changes to the fee schedules as shown. It does adhere to council's strategic plan, and it is, the relevant legislation is the Municipal Government Act, Section 8, 1.C1. There are no cost implications associated with this recommendation, and the bylaw 1847 will be posted on the MD website. Administration's recommendation is that Bylaw Number 1847, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville Number 87, to amend the Master Rates bylaw, be given first reading.
Thank you.
Yeah, not a lot of major changes, and I'll go for the first reading and then give us think, time to think about it for second and third, so.
Thank you.
Option number one, please.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fideya, for making a motion that Bylaw Number 1847, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville Number 87, to amend the Master Rates bylaw, to be given first reading. Any discussion on this first reading motion? All right, I see none. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That's carried. Onto 946.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I'm delighted to be here to present this report and presentation to start it off. I'd like to, first of all, thank the whole organization and the staff, and that is, all of the staff participated in the development of these business plans. And so, there was a fairly, fairly significant effort in developing facilitators within the organization. And so, it was all organization-driven, so this is the work of our people. Administration has prepared a 2024 departmental business plan to allow, align with council's strategic plan for information. The business plan, business planning is an industry best practice that is utilized to strategically guide and focus efforts on established priorities. Council provided those strategic, that strategic guide to administration with the approval of council's 2022 to 2027 strategic plan. Departmental business plans are developed to align with council's vision and to drive efforts for the achievement of council's goals and objectives. Business planning produces many benefits, both internally and externally. The following list provides some of the significant benefits. So, benefit, so, business plans are a tool to plan and execute priority work. They strategically focus efforts on priority projects. They serve as a communication tool within the organization to council and then externally to the community. They ensure the organization is working with our political leaders, and they provide a means to hold administration accountable for the work being performed. They provide the basis for annual budget development. And they generate a culture of understanding where every employee plays a part in departmental achievements. So, within each business plan, departmental vision and mission statements have been developed to more closely reflect the department's purpose. However, they remain closely aligned with council's vision and mission. And these business plans also include a high-level list of the services each department provides for council's review and information. So, it entirely aligns with the MD's strategic plan, 2022 to 2027. There is no provincial legislation adhering to this. The cost implications are that the established service levels that are reflected in the business plans will be incorporated in the preparation of the 2024 operating budget and capital plan. So, this presentation will be posted on the MD website. The recommendation is that council adopts the 2022 Departmental Business Plan presentation as information. So, the process here is that each one of the CAO and each one of the GMs will give a very short presentation of the... will, uh, give a very short presentation of the, um, of their, their service area. And, uh, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have as we, uh, roll along. So Lucky first is our chief administrative officer.
We went through all these today?
Really quickly, yes.
We were gonna skip Al though.
Okay.
We're gonna skip Al?
No, no.
He's important.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Uh, one of the things I appreciated about this, uh, initiative is this wasn't driven from the, uh, top down. As a matter of fact, uh, virtually every full-time permanent employee, uh, was involved in this through a series of meetings. We had our own facilitators in-house who walked the departments through this. So it was, uh, this really is, uh, it got everybody involved and got everybody focused. So my, uh, area of oversight, um, is the senior leadership team, communications and marketing, legislative and information, occupational health and safety. So the senior leadership team, uh, the vision is the M D of Bonneville will be a leader and an innovator in local municipal governance, services and economic prosperity. And I think that mirrors council's, uh, vision statement. Our mission is to support council in the development of a safe, sustainable and prosperous community. The senior leadership team itself, the key services that it provides are executive leadership, interdepartmental communication, planning for municipal sustainability, oversight of municipal operations, a unified voice, organizational innovation and organizational management. Another area that falls under my oversight is communications and marketing. And the vision there is that we are leaders and innovators in communication and trusted sources of information. Through our efforts, we are champions of the municipal organization and the community. And the mission is to provide accurate, timely and transparent information while striving to showcase the M D as an enviable place to live, work and visit. The key services provided by communications and marketing are internal communications, external communications, promotion of municipality and its programs, brand protection, reputation management and catalog and archive photography. Another very important area that you're familiar with, uh, every two weeks is our legislative and information department. And the vision there is the legislative and information service department will be an expert in legislation and an innovator in local municipal governance and services. Its mission is to support and ensure compliance in all legislative functions of the municipality. The key services provided are administrative secretariat and procedural support for council. Support all departments of drafting and amending municipal, municipal legislation. Support all departments with compliance to any applicable legislation. Manage, records management for council and C A O office records. Organize and manage municipal elections and census. Manage all public requests for information. Support records management with compliance in accordance with the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And provide advanced case management and administrative support for the municipal assessment review board and the subdivision development and appeal board. Uh, the last area that is currently under my oversight is occupational health and safety. And the vision is that we are a passionate team leading engaged employees who demonstrate a positive safety culture. And the mission is to empower employees to make safe choices every day, every time. The key services are to educate workers, support supervisors and all employees, reduce injury, illness and property damage in the workplace, health and safety resource, maintain the safety management system or our core. A workman's compensation board case management, administer online training programs and records. So that, uh, um, high level is the, uh, is the, uh, services provided by, uh, my, my department and the, and the departments that report to me.
Thank you, Al.
Okay, uh, we're into the corporate services service area. The departments under this area are assessment services, customer services, financial services, human resource and payroll services and information technology. Assessment services vision is the municipal district of Bonneville will be a leader and innovator in local municipal governance services and economic prosperity. The mission is we facilitate a safe, sustainable and prosperous community. Assessment services include fair and equitable property assessments, annual tax preparation and recovery. We, they protect the M D's assets through insurance and risk management. They monitor community economic activity and growth and they adhere to legislation. They generate stable revenue, they, they mitigate risk of revenues and they provide customer service and information to residents. Our customer services area, um, their vision is we provide excellent customer service within the community and organization through a knowledgeable, positive and professional team. And their mission is to provide accurate services and solutions through a pleasant experience. The key services for customer service is, of course, customer service. Internal and external communication, internal and external mail, financial support, uh, with through cash receipting, payments and bank deposits. And they provide main office perishable and non-perishable supplies. Pardon me. Financial services is the next department. Their vision is we are the financial custodian demonstrating excellence in the provision of reliable, accurate and timely financial information. Their mission is to provide financial guidance and support to all stakeholders. Financial services, um, their key services are their custodians of financial assets. They establish internal controls, financial processes and financial procedures. They, the dis- dispersment of funds. Uh, they provide accounts receivable invoicing, financial reports and statements. They provide data for decision-making, they manage tangible capital assets. They facilitate budget preparation and analysis. They manage financial records, uh, they provide customer service and they are the financial liaison, uh, institution liaison. Human resource and payroll is the next department. Their vision is the municipal district of Bonneville is a leader innovator and the employer of choice in the region. Their mission is we provide and maintain confidential support services through the employment life cycle. And their key services are they provide employee support, uh, payroll services, recruitment and retention of employees, benefit administration. They provide the framework to other departments for performance management. The, uh, employee records management and they maintain confidentiality. Information technology is the last department in my area. Their vision is the information technology department is a highly skilled and experienced team that leverages technology for the efficient and effective delivery of services to empower our community through digital in innovation. Pardon me. Um, their mission statement is we provide innovative and secure technology solutions for a prosperous community. Their key services are records management, data integrity, business continuity, technical support, security procurement and maintenance of I T infrastructure as well as I T project management.
So I guess I'm next. Environmental protective services. So departmental business plans are agricultural services, public safety and waste services. So the vision on agricultural services is the egg department is energetic, diverse team responsible for protecting and promoting our agricultural lands. The mission is balancing safe, innovative, sustainable agricultural now and for the future generations. The key services are vegetation management, roadside mowing, pest control, education for the public, farmers advocacy, equipment rentals, emergency livestock management, seed cleaning plants licensing, legislation commitments, uh, veterinary services and Lera and crop inspections and disease monitoring. Next is public safety. The vision is public safety is professional and adaptable team committed to promoting safe communities through effective education enforcement. To promote, uh, safe communities is the mission. The key services are crime prevention, education and awareness, industry contracts and commercial vehicles, municipal enforcement, bylaws, animal control. Next is traffic safety with education and enforcement. And next is waste services. So the vision is waste services department is leader and innovator in waste reduction and diversion for sustainable future with a mission to pursue a greener environment through education and stewardship. So the key services for waste services are waste collection, recycling collection, plus two waste transfer stations, plus three waste, uh, landfills, waste diversion programs, roadside cleanup program, maintenance of landfills and bin sites, public communication and education, snow and ice control and clearing of roadways hazards and illegal dumping.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council.
Afternoon.
Uh, this is for infrastructure services. Our department business, our departmental business plan is for fleet facilities and utilities and transportation services. Our vision is, uh, the department is committed to improving efficiency and responsible delivery of services to stakeholders. Our mission is to provide exceptional services and maintain and update fleet and infrastructure. Our key services in, uh, utilities are to operate and maintain fleet facilities and utilities to provide safe facilities, oversee capital projects, roads, bridges and buildings, water and sewer services, stormwater and drainage management, customer service, budget management and asset management. In transportation services, our vision is that we are a leader in safety, accountability and efficiency in public work services. Our mission is to provide and maintain quality services to enhance the safety and livability to our community. Key services provided by transportation services are road maintenance and repair for all four seasons, signage, drainage and flood control, brushing, bridge maintenance, airport maintenance and operation, Christmas lights and decorations, support other departments, environmental approvals, road use agreements, responding to residents, uh, requests and customer service and driveway flag maintenance.
Thank you.
And the best for last.
Is there one after you or? I thought you were. Hey, she can, she can throw something at, at me from there. It's just a joke, everyone, yes. She knows it, I know it.
Okay, so planning and community services. Under our department, uh, we have asset management, economic development, Kennesaw Ridge Resort, Parks, Recreation and Culture and Planning and Development. First off, asset management, our vision is that the asset management department of the M D of Bonneville will be a leader and innovator of sustainable services. Our mission is that we support and coordinate integrated asset management throughout the municipal district of Bonneville. And our key services are to manage our geographical data, to manage and support asset management best practices within the departments, produce visual maps, create and maintain a comprehensive register for all our physical assets, support the development and use of state of the infrastructure reports and asset management plans for all of our asset categories and to provide education and training across the organization. Economic development, our vision there is that the M D be a leader and innovator in local municipal governance services and economic prosperity. Our mission is to develop a safe, sustainable and prosperous community. Our key services are, uh, business traction, retention and expansion, collect, interpret, interpret, interpret and, uh, present data to promote investment, diversify the local economy and increase employment and revenue opportunities and to partner with our internal departments to support other strategic priorities. Kennesaw Ridge Resort, our vision there is to be a premier destination for recreation and tourism known for promoting an inclusive environment and exceptional experiences. Our mission is to be a premier year-round destination for elevated adventure and recreation and hospitality. Kennesaw Ridge's key services include our ski hill, including ski and snowboarding lessons, equipment rentals and servicing, um, and to manage our forty-one acres of skiable terrain serviced by snowmaking, two fixed quad chairs and two carpet lifts. We have our adventure park, we have our two park with our carpet lifts. We have our upcoming Target Golf, um, features. Uh, we also want to be a location for community events and private bookings. We highly involve and support schools and summer camps and programs. We have restaurant services, we provide excellent customer service where possible, which is always possible, and general outdoor recreation. Parks, Recreation and Culture, the mission, our, our, sorry, our vision is of to continue to help build vibrant communities that foster quality of life, wellness and appeal to all residents and visitors. Our mission is to develop a safe, sustainable and thriving recreational community. Our key services include the provision of park spaces, ball diamonds, ice rinks, recreation camping trails and maintenance thereof, um, tourism and community support. This also includes our visitor information and interpretive center, um, launched this year. And last is planning and development. The vision of the planning and development department is that we're committed to efficiency, focusing on public education, engagement in facilitating planning and land development. Our mission is to promote the development of a viable, safe and sustainable municipality. And our key services are customer service, permitting, land management and administration, planning documentation, public education and engagement, regulatory compliance by the M D and by our community as much as possible and records management. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, um, again, uh, administration's recommendation is that council accepts the two thousand twenty-four departmental business plan presentation as information.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion for option one.
Thank you, councillor Sutcliffe, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the two thousand twenty-four departmental business plan presentation as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, great job, it's clear, uh, very concise and, uh, so when, when an employee starts, are we gonna give him the booklet? And that's just Kate, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I take back my joke now. All right, we're on to nine point five point one. Good afternoon, Mr. Respol.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Reeve and council. I am here with, uh, policy C four A point zero one three, develop road allowance brush control policy, uh, new. Infrastructure Services has been tasked with coordinating and implementing the brushing program previously implemented by Ag Services. As this program is part of the infrastructure services portfolio in the past, the policy was already established. Infrastructure Services is proposing reviving this policy with some changes. See Appendix, uh, A, which is the revised policy C four A point zero one three. Policy C four A point zero one three establishes guidelines and priorities for brushing requirements. It also outlines the process for brushing of established road allowances for and by landowners. Uh, there's no reference to the strategic plan nor, uh, provincial legislation. The cost and source of funding is included in the two thousand twenty-three operational budget. The community strategy is to post the policy on the M D website. And it's administration's recommended action, the council adopts policy number C dash four A point zero one three, develop road allowance brush control policy as presented.
Thank you. Councillor Skarson.
I had a sort of question about, uh, do we own any brushers at all? Is that all contracted out?
Uh, through the reef to, uh, councillor Skarson, uh, we do have a, a small mulcher, uh, but some of this brushing can also be done with, uh, dozers, that kind of thing, so, uh, but currently we are contracting out the bigger projects that we have for brushing. But we could self-perform if needed.
Yeah, well, I think contracting out is the only way to go, but that's, uh, that's good. So anyways, I'll go with option number one.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Skarson, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts a new policy number C four A zero one three, development, developed road allowance brush control policy as presented. Any discussion on this, Counselor Swiger? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, just, I kind of brought up previously that we had a, we did have a brushing plan, and I just wonder if we were following the plan that we did have, and I guess I'll kind of mention the, you know, there, there was issues in the past, there still are issues where a lot of folks will live along a Range Road, Township Road, that, that unfortunately, I guess, they're, they're, they're counting on the trees and the road allowance to protect their property from just people driving by and looking in or whatever. So we had decided some years ago that if we had a long-term plan, then we could give people like five, ten, fifteen, twenty years advanced notice that we're going to come down your road and we're going to clear the road allowance, and then it's going to, it'll leave you totally barren, because there's some people that ended up that way. And so with a long-term plan and notifying folks, then it allows them to realize this is going to come. They can, you know, get trees planted and sort of be prepared for that. And so I'm just wondering how that works into your schedules, and if you got a, are you coming up with a new plan, or just so we can be kind of proactive and not really upset a lot of residents when we do brush right to the fence line?
Okay. Through the Reeve to Counselor Swiger's comments and questions. Administratively, we do a brushing program to protect the integrity of the, of the roads. It, it, we may take a pretty scenic road and take out all the trees, but that's for the benefit of the, of the infrastructure. As for a long-term plan, I can't predict what's going to be ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road to give somebody advanced notice to say that we're going to, to brush this. We look at short-term, when I say short-term, maybe five years, to say, okay, this road is getting beat up by lack of sun. It can't, it can't dry up. The, the traffic on it has gotten heavier. I, I don't feel that we have the luxury of a twenty-year window to allow somebody to plant some trees to get established on their side of the property line versus on, on our side. There may be times where we may be taking out somebody's shelter belt that is in our road allowance for the simple fact that we have to protect the road. In that five, ten, fifteen years, we could completely lose the road, or we would have to rebuild that road and do the brushing anyway. I, I'd like to be able to stand here and say, yeah, we can give everybody the, the, the advanced notice, but the reality of it is, is we can't.
Well, I, I'll just kind of maybe argue, you know, in the defense of some of the folks, though, how many miles of road do you have? And so you're going to do all, every road in the MD in five, in four years? Like, I'm just saying, you've got so many miles of road, you're going to have lots of areas where you won't get to for ten, fifteen years maybe to brush, so. And I understand, you know, the point of we're doing it to protect the roads and, but, you know, and there's roads that you're going to have to brush, and, and people aren't going to like it, but I just think we have the opportunity, as we did a couple of years ago, because we came up with a twenty-year plan. But I, I think we still have that opportunity because you have so many roads in the MD to kind of work with people and, you know, kind of just don't be kind of hard, hard with them and say, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. Sorry?
If I can, if I can add to that, the MD has been sensitive to people with their front yards. If you know what's going on to, on to Y Road.
Yep, for sure.
It is, it is clear, clear, cleared, and then you get in front of their house, and they, they leave them some, some trees for, you know, for privacy, and it's, it's been done on, I think, four twenty-one Y Road, and also even by, by four twelve as well. So again, it's one of those things where they clear it, they get in front of somebody's property, they do leave a buffer, so we've been quite sensitive to, to the people's request and their, and their privacy as well. We've done a good job.
And I've seen that, yeah, for sure, I've seen, I just, this doesn't kind of show that we're going to try to be.
Section six does.
Does it?
Counselor, yeah. It's, section six is, if requested by the landowner, ornamental brush under our trees at the discretion of the CEO may be left in a municipal road allowance within thirty meters of the access to or directly in front of the residence providing all priorities listed in five or maintained. So if, if it works that we can leave these trees in front of somebody's yard, we will, we'll work with the landowners. But at the end of the day, it is the MD's mandate to protect the infrastructure, not to have somebody's shelter belt within the MD road allowance. We're not going on private property to destroy their, their, their shelter belt, and if they're depending on the MD to, to, to have them, or to, to provide a shelter belt, that's, that's not what we're, we're here for. And further to that, some of these trees are, could be a stunted growth, and then all of a sudden they take off in, in five years. Now they're causing a problem. Again, to your argument that we should be able to, to give some advanced notice, that might be in, in some instances the case, but not in all of them. And again, we would, we would work with the landowners when we're doing this to say, you know, our reasons. We're not just, we're not just doing this to do it. There's, there's a method behind this type of program, and we would work with the landowners to, to do it. But ultimately, our goal is to protect the infrastructure of the MD, which is the, the roads, and if the trees and vegetation are the ones that are, you know, hampering that protection, then we'll get rid of the problem.
Okay, and I'll just ask you, I mean, I'm hoping you will look back at the plan that we've already got, and I don't know if you're going to change the entire thing or whatever, but it did, you know, give, it gave some folks some kind of, you know, idea that, yeah, we're not going to get there for a few years, but you're on a list or whatever, or down the road.
Sorry.
It worked out, and maybe it still worked.
So, Mr. Reeve, members of council, we do have the twenty-year plan. It's broken down into five-year segments. I'm not quite sure where we are in that, in that cycle. We have posted, you know, in, much in advance on the website, even the spring. Part of the issue with posting it is even the spring councils were getting called regarding brushing that was going to take place. It wasn't, because people didn't read the right address or read the right road on the website. So I know in one case, I received a call, and we sent staff out to go look and only to have to inform both counselor and the resident that the address that was listed on, that was on the website was not the address that they were complaining about. Even the, even the, the long-term advertising, it's not been my experience that anybody does anything about it, knowing that, well, they'll be here in five years, I better get a shelter belt planted. They wait until the last minute, and then they complain to the MD, typically to the counselors, that we're, we're tearing out their shelter belt. I'm not sure if anybody, including Matt, who used to be in charge of the brushing program, can point to any significant number of residents who have started planting shelter belts in the, in the advanced planning stage of knowing we're going to remove the shelter belt. So that, that's part of the issue here is, is we can certainly advertise it, but if all that's going to happen when we get there two years from now in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, they're going to pick up the phone, they're going to contact their local counselor, and then we're going to have to have discussions to why we're doing it. Well, it's been on the plan, that's why we're doing it. So it's, I would remind everybody, and Mr. Rispok was absolutely correct, it's our right of way, and we need to protect our infrastructure. That's the entire reason for doing brushing. It's not just because we feel like going out and doing brushing.
Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, maybe like in the rural review, once a year, in the springtime or something, we can advertise, and they're like, just have a little write-up explaining that we have to do brushing, and it's, you know, over the course of twenty years, we'll get the whole MD done, and so people can, at least they're aware then, right? It's up to them if they want to plant the trees or not, but at least there's, there's the awareness out there.
And I, I would do one, I, I think we could do one even better than that. I think we should be doing something in the rural review in the next two months that will impact next summer. We, I, I believe in getting that information, information out there as absolutely as, as early as possible, and then maybe a reminder into the winter. We could even put out what the plan is for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. I believe the more information, the better. So I, I completely agree. We, we need to get that information out. The sooner the better, and the reasons why we're doing it. You know, one of the other things we've run into, and it's not really infrastructure-related, but a lot of farmers can't get their equipment down some of the roads that are, have an overhanging canopy now. You can't get your big, you can't get your combine down that road, because it's not just you're brushing up against some small branches and, and leaves. You're now, you're now having to deal with three- and four-inch branches and damaging equipment. So that's part of this as well, is to, is to make the transportation network much more usable for the larger equipment that's, that is, that has kind of come about in the last few years in the farming community.
Well, I know we had Range Road four, six rebuilt, rebuilt a few years back. You guys left some trees there in front of some of those residents. You won't be touching them when you put the cold mix down, though, would you?
No, they gotta go, Donnie.
That's right. All right, we have a, we have a motion moved by Counselor Skarson that council adopts the new policy number C four A point zero one three, developed road allowance brush control policy as presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right, we're on to nine point six point one, I believe.
Good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon.
So at the April eleventh regular meeting of council, council directed administration to draft a new policy outlining the use of the MD's logo by third parties. Administration has prepared a new policy for council's consideration in response to that request. The new use of corporate symbols policy outlines who may use the MD's logo and other corporate symbols, including the public safety and Canisoo Ridge Resort logos, and it also stipulates that, stipulates that the use of these symbols must fit within certain criteria and standards as established by administration and the municipality. The committee of the whole reviewed this policy on May sixteenth and are recommending that council adopt the new policy as presented. It is attached as appendix A, and our recommended action is that council adopts the new policy as presented.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I just got a quick question here. So if, so who has the authority, let's say, so we see the logo being used somewhere, and someone doesn't like it, who, who has that authority to say, take that logo down, or is that a council decision, or how does that all going to play out?
So right now, we, the policy kind of gives control of that authority to the CAO to ensure that the use is within the standards of the municipality. Our communications and marketing department is currently working on an internal document outlining the protocol and standards and expectations for the use of that logo, so that not just for external use, but to ensure that the internal use of that logo fits those standards and expectations as well.
Yeah, so then, let's say, for example, the CEO gets a phone call from one of his counselors and says, I see this logo being used here, I want it down, and then the next counselor calls and says, I really like that logo being up, make sure we leave it up. How's that going to play out?
So through the Reeve to Counselor Skarson, that's a good question. It would, if the logo is not done to the standard that, let, let's say we complete rebranding in a few months, and we come up with a, with a new logo, and that logo will have very clear parameters, what the logo's supposed to look like, the size supposed to be, the, the parameters in, in which that logo is, and the context of, of that logo. If you called me and said, listen, that logo doesn't meet our standards, I want it taken down, and Counselor Crick calls and says, I like that logo, I want it to stay up, we would default to, is the logo that is in disagreement, does it meet the, the branding standards?
Yeah, but you're talking about the color and the font and the size. I'm, I'm talking about if it, what it represents, like, who's using it, let's say.
Well, the, the policy is, the policy has some clarity in terms of who uses it. For example, you are allowed to use it without permission, because permission is, is embedded into certain uses. So if the MD has provided support for a specific event through sponsorship and/or donation, so that, that group would be allowed to use our logo based on policy. The, the MD has an agreement in place which authorizes use of corporate symbols provided is used in accordance with the conditions of that agreement. So maybe we have an agreement with the Bonneville Pontiacs or some other group that you can use our logo for advertising. The MD has entered into a partnership with a third party on a community or regional initiative. So for example, the sports tourism committee. So if there's advertising going out, and, and the, the MD would be, our logo would be allowed to be used by that, because it's a third, it's a partnership on a community or regional initiative. And if the MD holds a seat as a municipal representative on the third party's board or committee, so for example, Munichor. Munichor had an ad saying they were coming through the MD Bonneville, it was going to be a, a trail ride, they would be allowed to use our logo based on, based on the policy. And then if a third party is registered or incorporated not-for-profit organization under the Alberta Society Act and receives annual funding support from the MD for their community events and initiatives, they'd be able to use our logo to say, you know, thanks to the MD, this project was, was able to be completed because of, because of the generous support of the municipality, the logo would be able to be used there. Corporate symbols must be, must meet the MD's branding standards, and there's some other, there's some other basic unauthorized use of corporate symbols will result in a request for MD to cease and use immediately and may result in the retraction of, of future use. And then finally, the corporate symbol should not be used in a manner that brings the integrity or reputation of MD as a whole into disrepute and will result in immediate withdrawal of any permission granted for use. So, so right off the bat, most of that policy will cover most of any disagreements, whether if we fund a certain group and that group is using our logo, that group is allowed to use our logo underneath the policy.
Yeah, exactly. So you're saying then that groups like the FCSS and Chamber of Commerce will have free rein to use our logo?
According to policy, yes. They are, they are funded. They fall under the exceptions. They are funded because we have provided support for a specific event or sponsorship or donation, and so yes, they would be, and we hold seats. If the MD holds a seat as a municipal representative.
So at the end of the day, if, again, if one of those organizations is in our logo, and one of the council's colleagues said, I don't like that being used for that, and one other council colleague says, I like it being used for that, what do you do?
I default to policy.
Yeah, so it really doesn't, I mean, the way this policy is read, read, is that everyone can use a logo. Like, I mean, there's not a lot of associations we're not touching at the end of the day, right?
Correct. The, the other option for a counselor who disagrees with use of our logo in any capacity is to, is to have the Reeve added as an agenda item on, or file a notice of motion, to have that as removed based on a council resolution. And have that be a council decision that you, that council does not want their logo used in a certain place, in a certain manner, in a certain time, in a certain location.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve.
Yeah, to me, this is more of a branding issue, and I, I totally like this. I mean, it's just, you know, I know with Booster Juice, you guys probably have lots of, you know, lots of branding. I know with, with us, we do, and it, they take it quite seriously, like on, on my end with, 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 you know, with that, and I think this is very long to fact. I know a lot of times the Chamber of Commerce does, does Feast on the Beach, they didn't use any logos for the City of Coal Lake or, or the MD, right? So it, it's all, it's all there, but that's just for that.
Yeah, and I agree. I think, I mean, it's, it's fine how it's written and everything else, right? But we all know that's not why this was brought up, right? So it's not because someone was in, was using the wrong color of the logo, right? So. Okay?
I think, I think some of the stuff that, you know, was used out there was used wrong internally and externally, where the, the, the font, or, or logo was squashed and not, not proportionate enough, right? So.
Yeah.
Okay, just looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
For this.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fideh, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council, council adopts a new policy number C two A zero three five, use of corporate symbols policy as presented. Any discussion on this policy? I don't see any, so let's go for the vote, call for the vote. That's Carrie. Thank you. On to nine point six point two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This is regarding the Regional Sports Tourism Committee, the adoption of the terms of reference. On June the fifth of two thousand twenty-three, the Regional Sports Tourism Committee held an initial startup meeting where terms of reference was completed and approved by the committee. Before they can proceed, these terms of reference now require approval from each council. Following adoption of the terms of reference by each council, each municipality will start working towards filling their respective member at large positions with the hopes of having someone appointed before the committee's next meeting, which is currently scheduled for September. Attached for your review is the, is the terms of reference and costs and source funding. some seed money will be expected through equal contributions from each municipality. However, the committee will determine what they believe that amount should be and will brought back to each council at a later date. The open position for the member at large for the MD of Bonneville will be posted on the MD website, as well as advertised through social media, with a report to council for appointment to the position at the August regular meeting of council. The recommended action is that council adopts the Regional Sports Tourism Committee Terms of Reference as presented. What I would point out is there were some blanks when this came to council as a draft. So we have filled in the blanks. The Regional Sports Tourism Committee is a joint committee of the MD, the city of Coal Lake, the town of Bonneville, and the village of Glan. And those were blanks. So that has been agreed on by the committee. The the next part was the composition, that the Regional Sports Tourism Committee will consist of eight members, including one member of council from each municipality, and four members at large appointed by each municipality. And all members will be appointed by resolution of their respective council. The positions of chair and vice chair are will be appointed for a one-year term. That was decided. And if the chair is unable to, the vice chair will assume the role for that meeting. Councillor Skarson was appointed chair, and I believe Neil Langridge was appointed as vice chair. Another change that was made to the draft is the recording secretary position will be rotated between the four municipalities on an annual basis, effective from the date of the first scheduled meeting. We hold a recording secretary position until June of two thousand and twenty-four, at which point one of the other members will take over take over that responsibility. Members of council will be appointed for two years. Member at large will be appointed for four years. And each council is encouraged to appoint an alternate. There was some discussion about that. So each council is encouraged to appoint an alternate. The meetings will be scheduled four times a year. Quorum is five. And remuneration travel expenses for member at large will be in accordance with their respective municipality's policy. The other change that we made, and it's in italics in the in the Terms of Reference, is the Regional Sports Tourism Committee will respect each municipality's management and marketing of their respective recreation and sporting facilities, independent from the Regional Sport Tourism Committee stated purpose in each municipality's strategic plan regarding local sporting and recreation initiatives. There was some discussion as to whether the Regional Sports Tourism Committee would end up infringing on municipal autonomy in terms of things they wanted to do in their own municipality from a recreation or a sporting position. So that is the new Terms of Reference. If the if the chair would like to speak to them, that is.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the Regional Sports Terms of Reference as presented.
Kate, thank you, councillor Skarson, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council adopts the Regional Sports Tourism Committee Terms of Reference as presented. Any discussion? I see Deputy Reeve Fideh.
Yeah, I know. In a lot of cases, with committees, they don't allow a sitting councillor to be chair. And I just hope that this isn't the case in this one. I don't see it anywhere. But the chair or the vice chair can be a municipal councillor.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. On to addition nine point six point three.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Members of the council. This is regarding the Northeast Alberta Leaders' Caucus funding. Reeve Kalinski has been attending the Northeast Alberta Leaders' Caucus and has decisionals made by that group to engage a lobbyist to petition on behalf of the Northeast Alberta municipalities for Highway twenty-eight improvements. The lobbying efforts have borne some fruit as witnessed prior to the provincial election, where the minister announced five million funding to begin engineering on Highway twenty-eight upgrades. The Northeast Leaders' Caucus has seen some success in their efforts. And in the spirit of regional cooperation, it is in our municipality's best interest to maintain involvement even at some financial cost. All of the goals and the strategic priorities are impacted by an upgraded Highway twenty-eight. Goal one, building a viable and diversified regional economy. Goal two, enhance safety in community. And goal three, promoting community development of council's strategic plan requires safe, effective, and efficient highway transportation corridor. The Northeast Alberta Leaders' Caucus created a formula for the funding initiative. And as you can see in appendix A, the county or MDs are to fund this at the two thousand dollar level. The source for this funding is reckoned to be from the community sponsorship and donations budget. So our recommended action is that council approves payment to the Northeast Alberta Leaders' Caucus for the MD of Bonneville's contribution towards the cost for lobbyists in the amount of two thousand dollars payable to the town of Vagerville to be funded from the two thousand and twenty-three community sponsorship and donations budget. The reason it's to the town of Vagerville is they've taken the lead in terms of managing this particular initiative. So and as you can see, the the funding agreement appendix A and the invoice that we've created, it would go in with our payment. So council can choose to to go with the option one, approves payment to the Northeast Alberta Leaders' Caucus in a different amount, that council approves payment of two thousand to be funded from a different area, or that council denies payment completely.
Thank you, Al. Yes, go ahead.
I'm just curious, like, it seemed that, you know, we heard about this lobbyist almost immediately before they made announcement for funding. But do you think the lobbyist actually did anything? Or is there more work to be done yet? Or like, what is there? What is he? What is this person going to be doing exactly?
Well, it was it's a group. So and the guy that headed it up, he's he's from Vagerville, right? So he headed it up that we should lobby the government. I don't know if it was for sure. But every little bit helps, I guess. But we did set it up to for them to we got a lobbyist group to go. And then it's hard to believe it was that quick that something happened. But maybe it was in the works, and we just brought it over the top. But, you know, five million dollars is a lot of money. But for engineering for Highway twenty-eight, it's, you know, there's a lot 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 more to go here, you know, so.
I'm just so like, is is he going to be reporting back to the group then, I guess?
Yes. I did miss a meeting the other day. There was probably a report, but I didn't. I wasn't. I didn't attend. So they just had a meeting probably four or five days ago now. Yes? Okay, thank you, councillor Swigger, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves payment of the Northeast Alberta Leaders' Caucus for the MD of Bonneville contribution towards the cost for lobbyists in the amount of two thousand payable to the town of Vagerville to be funded from the two thousand and twenty-three community sponsorship and donation budget. Any other discussion? Yes, go ahead.
And so is this ongoing? Or is this a one-time cost? Like, I don't understand either what it means by you can choose to pay any amount.
Well, you could you could choose to, like, give a donation up to whatever to get this going. Or they had per capita. So whatever, they have a formality out there that I've seen that so much for a village, so much for a town, so much for whatever. And that that's what we fell under. So.
So then how much? How thirty-six thousand dollars? How long does that get you a lobbyist for?
At this time, I don't I don't know if that was a one-time thing before the election, or I can't answer that right off the bat. I I assumed it was for a one-time thing because I'm sure lobbyists ain't going to work for you for two, three years for thirty-six, you know, thousand bucks. So.
Mr. Reeve, I could probably help with that a little bit. The the actual cost of getting the group set up and the lobbyists is twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty. And I believe the thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollar number is if every municipality paid at that level, and they had planned that if eighty percent paid, there would be just enough money to cover those initial costs. So the thirty-six thousand, I I don't know where we stand. I know there's only four or five municipalities that hadn't paid when I received the the invoice. But if eighty percent of the municipalities in the area pay, they will have enough to cover those initial starts. The Highway twenty-eight advocacy was fifteen thousand dollars for the lobbyist. And and then there's some startup costs and some contingency. It came to twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty.
I wouldn't mind hearing about some feedback, though, right? I mean, it sounds like it's almost like for one meeting almost, right? So.
Well, you know what? I can I could phone a guy during if we have a little break here, I'll phone up a guy that I know that was there, and I'll get some information.
I don't think we got time for any more breaks today, so.
Okay. Well, you're looking for information, so I need a break to get it. Okay, go ahead. Sorry?
Yeah, just more of a comment. So if you choose not to participate, you can still be a part of the group, get all the benefits of lobbyists, and get all the benefits of the group, but you don't have to pay?
Well, I pretty well promised that we'd pay.
No, I'm not. I'm not saying. So say, say, there's a municipality or a community that's nearby that doesn't want to pay. They just don't pay.
Well, it was kind of a volunteer thing, right? So, you know, there's a lot of community out there, like this whole group. There's some they come there, they don't they, you know, it's pretty tough times. And I guess it's tough times for everybody, but some of them, it's a pretty rough goal. But, you know, some of them are lobbying for Highway twenty-eight, and they live how many miles off Highway twenty-eight at the beginning of twenty-eight? So it's not as, you know, we're right in the we're right, we're right in the mid, we're right down the pipe here. So it's a big deal for us, a lot more bigger than a town that lives fifty, sixty miles off of Highway twenty-eight. And still, they're willing to, you know, make that the main priority of our group, when maybe it's not affecting them as much as it is affecting us and Coal Lake region, like the whole MD of Bonneville. That's a big, big deal for us. We, you know, we could be contributing more, actually.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, one of the issues, and I have spoken to the CAO of the town, to Mr. Rogers, and he is in agreement, is this group has no Terms of Reference. And I would highly recommend that the group put a Terms of Reference together, because we don't know, you know, Highway twenty-eight was a was a good thing to get on right away. But now that they're moving on Highway twenty-eight, what's next? And I think a Terms of Reference for any committee, where that committee knows what its what its its boundaries are, would be a good idea. And particularly, very early in the game, this this group has already committed funding. And it would be nice to have a Terms of Reference, so we know what we know what everyone is in for on an annual basis, and what a process would be in terms of receiving an invoice, or making a payment, or how that group was about hiring people. A lobbyist was hired, but I'm not aware of any particular procurement that I mean, we have procurement policies here. We don't hire anything or or do anything unless we follow the very specific policy about free quotes, or tenders, or requests for quotations. And so I would just suggest that maybe at a meeting, the idea be floated that maybe the group should consider a Terms of Reference to be created that would discuss some of those things.
Yeah. And I did miss the last meeting, so they could have talked.
Know that you're getting your money's worth, right? I mean, it's, yeah, two thousand bucks is whatever. But, you know, he's still charging thirty grand for what exactly, right? And is he done now? Right? I'm assuming it's just one person or whatever. But it's it's what what is there, right? So. Yep.
Yeah, I I hear you. But but usually, a lobbyist group like that is is usually hired by one one municipality, and and they get charged that to lobby something on just for their. I thought it was pretty, I don't know, cool is the right word, that a lot of these other little towns from and maybe they aren't paying for it at the at the end of the day. But they are all, and they they said, we need to make take one thing to the ministers or right before the election and hammer it home. We're not going to take fifteen things there. And, you know, they don't know. It's confusing, right? So we took, we decided amongst everybody in the room that we're going to go Highway twenty-eight. And we benefited probably the most, because we're we're right at the end of the thing in Coal Lake and the town of Bonneville. We so it was. And I don't even know if we're the ones that said, hey, let's do this the number one. But everybody was on board right away, because everybody knows Highway twenty-eight really sucks.
Yeah, I don't argue that. I guarantee you, though, that there's some conversations like this taking place, where councillors are going, where's Highway twenty-eight at again? Right? So I don't know. We'll see how it plays out, but.
I don't think we. Did I read this out? Yes, I did. Looking for, I'm going to call for the vote then. Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Nine point seven point one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeve. Members of council. Nine point seven point one is council invitations. We only have one invitation for council coming up, and that is an invitation to the Rural Municipalities of Alberta District Five Golf Tournament on the twentieth of July of this year. The County of Two Hills is hosting the annual RMA District Five Golf Tournament this year on Thursday, the twentieth of July, at the Two Hills Lions Golf and Country Club, starting at ten AM. Cost for attending the event is a hundred and twenty dollars per person, which includes eighteen holes of golf, cart, lunch voucher, two beverage tickets, and a steak dinner to follow. You can see the attachment, which is the invitation, and administration recommended actions that council approves. How many individual registrations for the Zone Five RMA Golf Tournament?
You're the only one with golf balls. You're all right. How many did you find at the last tournament? No. So anybody interested in going to this? I can. I should look at my calendar.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a team, though.
Yeah, representation.
Yeah, even if it's.
It's RMA, right? I need a break from this water right about that day, eh? Okay, let's see. That's July twentieth, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm I'm game. So I guess we're you need a motion? I guess we don't just let you guys know, and then we'll find a team? Or do we need a we don't need a motion for that?
No, I would, Mr. Reeve, members of council, I just I would just suggest if you want to put a team together, just to, I'd say, four individuals. And we already know the names of two of them. So it's just a matter of fleshing it out for the other two.
Okay. Bring in a couple golf pros or? Miss Mokel? We do need a motion? I apologize. Kate, looking for a motion to attend this rural RMA District Five Golf Tournament in Two Hills?
I'll make the motion to put a team in, even though I can't make it.
All right. Thank you. We'll wait for them to write that up.
Oh, I'm waiting for it on my screen, and it's up there. Moved by councillor Crick that council approves four individuals' registrations for the annual Rural Municipalities of Alberta RMA District Five Golf Tournament to be held on July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of a hundred and twenty dollars per person, to be funded from the two thousand and twenty-three operating budget. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Apologize there, Robin. That's carried. Thank you. On to ten. Correspondents and information.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Members of council. You see the correspondent report in front of you. Some of it is is a likely stale-dated correspondence, as we did miss the council meeting. Just receive for information, please.
Just looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to receive this information.
Kate, thank you, councillor Subtik, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through twenty-three. Any discussion on any one of these up to twenty-two? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie, thank you. We'll do council action reports. Mistress. Sure. No problem.
Good good event in Yellowknife. And of course, they're talking about waste, and they're talking about extended producer responsibilities, and and a lot of it to do with solid waste in the north. And so they have their own challenges in the north. So lots of different sessions on solid waste. One was an interesting session, and it was a tour of a landfill and a giant mine. So they have a giant gold mine there that's now just in a big open pit area that was closed.
So they have a giant gold mine there that's now just a big open pit area that was closed down after basically ran out of gold. The owner, the owner left town and left them up there with this big hole in the ground that was actually polluted and toxic. And so the federal, this is an interesting story. The federal government gave them four point five billion dollars, so with a B, to clean it up. So, I mean, I guess it helps if you're, you're in Yellowknife and you're, you're, you're the capital of Northwest Territories. And anyway, the feds helped them out with that. And there's a, I don't know, ten-year program to clear up that old gold mine. So that was kind of neat to see that one. There's some talk about, and I just highlighted some of the stuff, bylaws to regulate what can and cannot be collected or must be collected for composting and for greening up. And I was from B C, just interesting to note that they actually do put bylaws in place to, you know, get people to join into these waste collection streams so that they're, they're collecting compostables rather than throwing it in a landfill. So that's, you know, something maybe we start considering doing, too, is trying to get more people to compost. Sure helps. Yeah, another, one of the final sessions, they had a discussion about a food rescue program. Interesting because there's a lot of food waste that goes on from restaurants, et cetera. And so they actually had legislation changed to allow rescued food to be picked up. And then you couldn't sue businesses if they, if some of the food was bad or whatever. There's also Good Samaritan legislation, apparently, and I think that's federally. It allows businesses to donate their leftovers, leftover foods instead of throwing it in the, in the garbage. So there's, you know, areas in the M D, I'm sure, where we could maybe make use of that. Oh, the next one, Alberta Care. That was a virtual one, was a good, good session. Brad Owen was elected as director for Region Two. The Alberta Care Conference in Grand Prairie on September sixth to eighth. And just comments about Alberta Care and there are lots of workshops that they put on for our staff. So it's, you know, they have household hazardous waste courses and landfill operators courses and workshops. And so Alberta Care is a good, good, good thing to be part of. And then the next one or last one was the C two meeting, I think last night. Just comments, I guess, about Blue Flame did the parking lot or is going to do the parking lot, the C two, and not re, just repair it and patch it and that sort of thing because it would be a bigger job. And so they're, they're having that tendered out or contracted out. And then the other one was the roof, they just had the roof redone. So they're good for a while. And I did bring up the comment of our economic development guy, though, and I'd maybe ask the C I O to just kind of listen to this one for a second and, because I just mentioned that maybe if our economic development guy spent a bit of time at the C two, it might help, you know, with the C two and it could help us. And just that Scott might be able to kind of bring some insight into C two. Just get new businesses or whatever that might be in the area.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sutcheck?
Well, there was, we, well, it's been a long time since last council, so there's a lot that we did. Attended a couple of emergency preparedness barbecues in Bonneville, one at Ardmore Skating Ring. Turnout was really good. Attended a couple of our board meetings. Alicia Krajczyk came back from maternity leave, so it's good to have her back as executive director. Traveled to Toronto for the F C M conference, which was very interesting. And then spoke with lots of councillors from other municipalities, communities. And they're all seem to be having the same challenges we are with labours and medical. Also attended the four H Club show and at the club show and sale at the Coal Lake Agriculture Grounds. There are a lot of calves there and good turnout. The Cold Lake, city of Cold Lake bought a few steers and then they donate them to the food bank. And maybe that's something we could look at eventually down the road, looking if the M D could purchase a calf or two and donate as well to the food bank. As well, attended asset management workshop, Real Million. It was a very well-tended event, which was very informative. And also on June tenth, there we attended the senior social, had a senior social evening and hall dedication, which was named after Mr. Bill McGregor. And so it's changed from Senior Dropping Center to the Bill McGregor Center. And so that was a very honour for him. Also attended our R M H C Golf Tournament in Coal Lake. And there was a lot of attendance, had nice weather. And Brad Owen and his wife spoke of their experience when, because they had to stay with their child. And you're on the dollar house. Then the oil, gas show opening ceremonies with Kendall Dillon, speaking on pathways. Was very informative and interesting as well. And then, oh, we attended Lake Land Lodge House Meeting again. And they're started forward with the demolition of the old Coal Lake Lodge. They're hoping to have that done there by late fall. And also they're looking for, they're proposing to look for sponsors for to create a Bonny Lodge Seniors Backyard Oasis in Bonneville. And their back, their request is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So they're looking for some way to get sponsors to help them build a little garden oasis for seniors. And maybe we could have them advertising Rural Review or something on that as well. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve Fidev?
Yeah, thank you. Yesterday, we had a library board meeting, just the usual. Still, there, there was, they had to consider banning one person for being a little, I guess, confrontive. Yeah, it was just, staff was scared, so they were looking at banning him. We had, had, had to say a few words at the Glendon Grad. It was good, you had twenty graduates there and they, yeah, it was a great event as usual. When they went out with a, with a bang. And Ardmore Motorsports that day, it's a tractor pole races, were fantastic. It was, I can really see that event expanding. It was, it was really good to see guys all the way from Saskatchewan and Reston, Alberta, where they're racing. Our. What the heck was this? Okay, and then Alberta Care. Yeah, Brad Owen is a director for Alberta Care now and that's going to be great. We've got a little more, more input from, from us. National Indigenous Day on the twenty-first, represented, said a few words for the M D. Smart Star Program, that was hosted at the, at the ridge out in, out at Canuso. We seen about six graduates from the program. And four H Coal Lake Society said a few words on behalf of the M D at the start. And they were asking me to, to buy a few.
Stairs?
Few stairs and I, I passed.
Okay.
I told them that I wasn't a Reeve, I didn't have the big checkbook, so.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, so they all understood. And also with, with, with the Yellowknife, that was, that was pretty amazing. A lot of things that, that kind of stood still to me was the, we need to do some critical thinking on our future waste. Seeing a lot of tightening of regulations that aren't going to be cheap or easy to deal with. I'm excited that the Peace River Waste Commission is in the final stages of environmental approval for their, for their bio waste, for their biomass. And they're going to be doing a desktop analysis on their R O I and you're probably looking at about five to ten years. One thing about, we, they didn't really say too much at, at, in Yellowknife until the very last, last meeting or was the, the one guy, the ex-mayor of, of Yellowknife, said that seventy percent of their buildings are, are powered by, by my, by biomass with all the pellets that they get from the crete. So everything's powered for that, so they don't use any external powers to, to heat their buildings, which was pretty exciting. In regards to that giant, it's not a giant mine, it's the actual name of it, was, they, they, they walked away from it and basically the federal, federals got it. So it took a ten, took them ten years to get the approvals and paperwork done. And now they're doing everything by the, by the book and there's going to be four point, four point five billion dollars spent in it. And there's all going to be, there were, there were questions on the Western Trade, Western Trade Agreement. That doesn't apply up there. It's, it is basically gone for bids for only two of the local indigenous groups that are up there. So there's going to be a lot of money spent up there. But yeah, it's a pretty interesting place. Yeah, that's about it. If you guys have any questions in regards to that, please reach out to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got one question right away for you. With regards to that, there was a gold mine that was shut down?
Uh, yes.
Cleaning it up?
Yeah.
Did they make anywhere close to how much it's going to cost to clear that?
That is, that is a good question. I think they, the numbers I. I'll go to my phone B. So I think that one there, yeah, they, they did, but basically they had a lot of arsenic trioxide that they, that was part of the process when they were breaking it down, that they just shoved it into the ground. And basically it was started leaching in on all the water. And it was, it was, I mean, it's arsenic, so it was, it was pretty bad. And then for a while there, they were trying to burn it. And that burn was just, I guess, lingered over top of Yellowknife for, for years until they figured out that this is not a good idea. So they just kept, kept dumping it and was, was pretty careless. And what happened to that is they, they had a strike because of, because of unsafe conditions. And so the, the owner at the time was pretty unscrupulous. And so she brought in a bunch of scabs and to, to defeat the union. And one of the union workers or somebody decided to do a booboo trap in one of the mines and blew it up and killed nine people. And there was also a couple murders that were unsolved in the community as well. So that person changed her name and moved to Arizona and handed over the keys to the federal government on that. So, but yeah, it's, 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 when they say the wild up north and wild west, yeah, that's, should be, I think there was a story written. There's, there's a movie, right? On that one? Yeah, there was supposedly like a movie or documentary done on that.
Thanks.
I'll start, I'll start off, I guess, with F C, F C M, because it's been a while since we had our last council meeting. Got to listen to the Prime Minister mostly tell lies to us for about fifteen minutes. And also had a bunch of good conversations walking around with other people, though, while I was there. I was able to wear a oil and gas T-shirt representing our industry in the area. So I was quite, quite happy with that and had a lot of really good conversations with people. Even people just, other parts of Canada had no idea about our industry, so it was good. Also had to tour of the, one of the water treatment plants in Toronto. It was quite old, almost a hundred years old, still operational, that was neat to see. On the third, this will be the month of June, on the third, we had F C S S strategic planning. And then we also, we finished that up on the twenty-third. Basically came up with the, yeah, we came up with a basic strategic plan and a mission state, vision statement that our community is inclusive, connected, and resilient. On the eighth, went and had asset management. And on the seventh, I guess there was the M D Staff rodeo, safety rodeo, attended that, that was very well done. On the tenth, senior social evening in Bonneville. And I was there with councillor Sutcheck when they renamed the hall. On the eleventh and twelfth, there was F C S S Regional Meeting in Saint Paul. I got to have, have lunch with our M L A. Well, it was, they were both candidates at the time, I had lunch with both of them. And on the fifteenth, actually on the fourteenth, we went to the R M A Coal Creek Golf Course. That was a good day. On the fifteenth, there was a B R F A meeting in the morning and then K O M E C Grand Opening in the afternoon. And the highlight of that day, I think, was in the evening, the Royal Canadian Sea Cadets here on in Bonneville. They're doing their awards for the end of the year. So I got to present the award on behalf of the M D. And they're pretty incredible students there, trying to teach me how to tie a knot. Throw a rope to you in the water and the guy could tie it with one hand in about five seconds. And that took me, I don't know, ten minutes, I still didn't quite get it, so. They worked pretty hard at their stuff, though. On the fifteenth, had a B R F A meeting, I also did that. On the sixteenth, the F C S S in Bonneville, they're putting on Community Fun Fridays, I think, once a month throughout the summer. So I went to that one. And the seventeenth, I was at, in the Coal Lake Grand Centre Golf Course. Yeah, and also heard Brad and his wife speak, they did an amazing job speaking there and sharing their story. Twenty-second, we had an F C S S Board Meeting. And on the twenty-third, in the evening, had a Goodridge Barbecue and for the B R F A. They're handing out the awards for the firefighters there. So a lot of longtime service awards at that station. And then yesterday was an egg service board meeting here. That's about it for me.
Thank you.
So since the last meeting, I had a couple of library meetings, pretty routine. They're shut down for the summer now and same as a couple of chamber meetings, which busy planning the oil show. And so for the oil show, I thought it went actually really, really well as an exhibitor and as a councillor there. You know, talking to the guys at the pathways and so many other couns, companies that were there. So that was good. And so I gave them some good feedback on what I would like to see next year or next time as an exhibitor. And it was really good to see all the councillors there as well, so making an appearance, so that was good. And the only other one was the Regional Sports Tourism Committee, which we talked about earlier, so.
Good job, everyone. I just want to comment on the trip down east. You guys all touched on it, but I went on a little vacation after Quebec and I had a lot of those shirts left over, so I was ditching them here and there. And I got acquainted with a dairy barn there. And there's a bunch of young guys that were milking cows there. And I gave them these shirts and they started talking about, yeah, we get it, we understand that we need oil and gas. But he says, a regular person there in the, in the province of Quebec, they, they just, they, they don't, they, they think it's just crazy. They just want to go all electric and that's, that's the only way there is going to be. And they say there is room for electric and all that, but he says on the farm, you need oil and gas to, to run right now. So they, they get it. But then he also, one of the young guys took me just down, like with a gator across the field to another. So it's pretty, pretty cool. So he took me to a greenhouse that his girlfriend owned and she's like, I think she's twenty-six years old. And the province of Alberta gave initiatives to young farmers. And she put up a greenhouse that's worth about a million bucks. And it's all, the only thing that she had to do is make sure it's electrical. So all the power plants and all, it's got to run off electric, you know, for the watering and all. Everything's got to run off electricity, nothing, no propane, no gas. And they gave her, like, it was a million dollar and they gave her seven hundred thousand dollars to, for a young farmer in Quebec. And I thought that was, that's a lot of money. That's quite an initiative for young, a young farmer in Quebec to get, I don't know. And the biggest thing was it had to be electric. So I thought, wow, that's quite an incentive to go all electric there. So I, that's a big, I couldn't believe it. But it was a beautiful facility. She's putting up another one, believe it or not, right beside it. So anyway, that's, and then Al had oil and gas all over his luggage stickers, so I thought that was pretty cool. Well, we, 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 we preached oil and gas when we were in Toronto. If we did, if we did nothing else, we did that at least and everybody knew where we were coming from. So good job on all your reports. I did a bunch of those things you guys reported on, so very good. Oh, strawberries, sorry, I should have said that. Yeah, and they were fantastic. I took some to Renee's auntie and, where do these strawberries come from? Well, your neighbor about a mile away. So she couldn't believe, they're tasty, they are all in gravel and all hydroponic and no, like, they, they hung there and you just walked along and picked all these beautiful. And she said she shuts down for the, for the months of, between the end of June to August because there's so many other markets throughout, you know, in the summertime. And then she fires up in the, for the winter and she makes strawberries all winter long. Yeah, great business.
Okay. Where are we going? We have to go to a closed session now? You got to wash them? Okay, go ahead. Take a break, I guess.
I'll make a motion, I'll make the motion, go in closed session.
Deputy Reeve Fidev makes the motion to go in camera. Closed session.